Hey. Halen, Squamish, Wis, Tuliknamak, Tla, Sko'olnish, Mwenkwe. Welcome everyone to the Squamish Nation Traditional Territory. I'm councillor Chris Pevingill and we are here for the Committee of the Whole for April 19th, 2019. April 9th, sorry, thank you very much. 2019. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Councillor Herford, councillor Race, thank you. So the first order of business.
I understand.
Oh. Getting ahead of myself, too much coffee already. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. The first order of business is Squamish Vancouver Coastal Health Collaborator Agreement update. And Mr. McJanon, would you like to take that for us, please?
Great, thank you councillor Pevingill. Hello councillor, my name is Sarah McJanon, I'm a community planner with the district. Today we are reintroducing the district's healthy communities collaboration agreement with Vancouver Coastal Health. This was originally signed in 2015 and then subsequently amended in 2017. We are seeking council's endorsement to renew our commitment to collaboration with the health authority. And subject to council support, we are also today soliciting input to confirm joint priorities for ongoing collaboration activities for 2019 to 2021, the next two years. This helps us guide activities with Vancouver Coastal Health as well as other community organizations and agencies that are involved in healthy community planning efforts. To provide context and highlight the different collaboration roles and the great work and the progress that we've made, I'm joined at the table today by Dr. Jeff McKee, who is the medical health officer for Vancouver Coastal Health, and Claire Graham, who's the policy lady with the population health team. And in the audience today, we have a number of Vancouver Coastal Health staff locally, health officers and local public health staff. So we have Dan Glover, Sabrina Sanju, Gary Caston, and Christine Good. So thank you so much, they've been involved with us in different capacities over the years. And there's really a great local team as well. The overview today, we're going to present for 15 minutes, the maximum time for discussion. Jeff and Claire are going to introduce some important background to the healthy communities work, contextualize the work of the authorities and the health authority. We are hoping to help council understand today that the public health linkages with local governments are distinct from health services. Public health being distinct from health services, determinants of health, why they matter, as well as the concept of health equity that's really informing our work. I'm going to quickly highlight the collaboration outcomes of the four years that we've been working, and also propose priority action areas to focus our attention going forward. And then Jeff and Claire are going to provide an update on the next round of the My Health, My Community survey, health survey that's going out later this year, as well as plug the Healthy Communities Congress that's happening in May that you've been invited to. And then we're going to open it up for dialogue. Does that sound okay? Great, over to Jeff.
Okay, great. Well, good morning and thank you very much for the invitation to come here and speak with you today about healthy communities. I thought initially I'd just go over some background information, which kind of puts this in context. The first slide here you'll see is a diagram that came from the Guiding Framework for Public Health, which is the provincial guidelines or guidance for how we do public health work in the health authorities in British Columbia. And this shows some of our core programs as well as how it fits into the broader picture. You'll see on the left there, or at least my left, that public health is split into a number of different program areas, including health promotion, health protection, preventive interventions, and assessment and surveillance. This differs a little bit from what you see in the other parts of the health system. We're kind of, we look a lot more upstream, whereas most of the health systems focused on those downstream treatment and management of conditions. This all fits within the context of population health. So this is how do we change those upstream factors in our healthcare system or in our communities? And this is really where Healthy Communities fits. And you'll see there, within our guiding framework from the ministry, we have our reporting of public health trends, as well as intersectoral collaboration and working with partners, because a lot of what influences health is not within our control in the healthcare system. It's everything else in our communities, it's in our policies and our built environment. And so maybe go to the next page, which, this comes from the recent provincial health officer's report. So again, coming down from the ministry, which is a common diagram that you'll see. And where if we look at what, this is what influences health. And you'll see there, the healthcare system is really only 25% of that picture. 75% of that picture comes from other things in our environment, the types of communities we live in, our own biology, but also those other things in our life. And this is where you'll see some of the social determinants come in, all those other factors in life that influences the majority of our health. Let me go to the next page. So this really drives down into what we're talking about today, which is the Healthy Communities project. And this is focusing on that 75% of what determines our health. And so what is a healthy community? It's all those other things in our community that really influences how we live, how we develop healthy living, healthy lifestyles, and how we affect those determinants of our health. So we'll get into talking more a little bit about health communities, but that just provides that context of what we're talking about today. It's not those healthcare services, it's all those other parts of our environment that influence our health. So maybe I'll go over to Claire next. Oh, I forgot. We're also talking about health equity here, and you'll see this in the framework as well. And so this is a image you'll probably have seen, although there's one little piece here that is a bit different from prior images. And when we're talking about equity, we're talking not necessarily about equality. Equity is to make sure that we bring everybody up to a good level, whereas we all start from a different place. You'll see there, there's different height of people, and what we want to bring up everybody to the same level. But I think what's important here is the part on the right, which is that it's not only about bringing everybody up, it's also about removing those barriers in our communities that might prevent us from healthy living. And that's where our communities can really have an impact as well. So health equity really is a core component of everything we do, and it kind of provides a lens which we can approach our work. So maybe we'll come to Claire now to talk about the VCH initiative.
Yeah, so the history of collaboration between local governments and health is not new. Obviously, local governments started at the same time as public health to address the health issues at the time, which was communicable diseases. And the biggest gains of life expectancy happened as the result of water and sewer. It was long before antibiotics or universal healthcare systems. It's really how to keep people well. So the, and now we're moving, we've kind of moved from infectious diseases to more dealing with chronic diseases. And now, so the ministry in 2011, administered health, in 2011 started the Healthy Communities Initiative. Had a different brand at the time, but essentially the Healthy Communities Initiative. And it was encouraging the health authorities to partner with local governments to start to address some of these upstream determinants of health that we spoke about before. And so what we've done is each health authority and each community looks unique because of the circumstances in each community and the circumstances of each health authority. But within VCH, we have kind of a two-part, where we're looking both at what are the processes of building partnership and collaboration? That is as important or similarly important to what we work on together. It's building the muscle of being able to work well together. So the outside brain talks about building the partnerships, determining how we work together, supporting action and recognizing and celebrating the successes that happen. Inside are some of the topic areas or the content areas that we collaborate on with each local government. And that includes, and each agreement that we have with the local government includes what's the process of working together, who are the key partners, and a method for updating the priorities for what we'll work on over the next year or two, which is what we're here for today. But putting in context, what we do in Squamish is really, this is, what I like about this system is it's part of a nested system of support. So what we do in Squamish is linked to what we do in all our communities across VCH. It's a busy map, our maps don't show up very well. From our urban communities of Vancouver, Richmond in the North Shore, Powell River, Sunshine Coast, the Central Coast, Bella Bella, Bella Cula, and of course, See the Sky are our areas. So we cover from very urban areas to very remote communities. And we've got 14 municipalities, 14 First Nations, and five regional districts that we work with. So supporting the work with the local staff, we've got a number of regional teams that support the work. So the, and that provides resources such as small grants, and the sharing across communities. And My Health, My Community results, which is one of the big regional contributions, I think, to this work. Provincially, we've got Plan H that the ministry funds to support this. So they provided some of the small grants as well, they provided a number of resource guides, they do some facilitation. So we draw on regional support, provincial supports as well, and some of our national collaborating centers for some of the evidence and background. So just to say that the work that you see here today is in a nested system of supports where we can draw on other places to inform it.
To expand on what Claire is saying, these grants and resources and the information that we're being, or we're able to access has been so vital to the capacity that we've been doing locally. So it's been really fantastic. Okay, so on to the collaboration agreement. So it's a draft update is attached to the report today. The district signed the original in 2015, as I said. And it's really been a platform and a bit of a work plan identifying those areas of joint interest and concern. So staff sit together quarterly with Vancouver Coastal Health. We're guided by a terms of reference. And basically, it's an opportunity to highlight where there's opportunity to work together on different projects that the district is undertaking. So that's kind of value add is the best way to describe it. And then as part of that agreement, we also have outlined a one-year annual check-in with council. And so that's what we're doing here today, essentially. And the last time we were in front of council, it was 2017. We took a break in 2018, just because the OCP was so full on. And in terms of the initial priority focus areas that we originally established in 2015, they included active transportation, early childhood development, and local food systems. And those are all related or linked to this overall healthy built environment focus. Our collaborations have continued to sit with these areas primarily for the last several years. They were informed back in the day by council's strategic priorities. So that was a time when we were doing a lot of work around active transportation planning, which continues. There were areas of emerging concern, such as early childhood vulnerabilities, that caught our attention. And so that informed the ECD priority area. And then also additional work that was happening around food systems and policy gaps around food. And so the keystone project for us was the OCP, and I'll speak to that momentarily. Collaborations with Coastal Health have set a strong policy foundation for us, and also a foundation for multi-sector work. So this helps us move beyond isolated interventions and work better together. They have expanded staff knowledge, skills, and capacity. We've benefited from data sharing, analysis, and reference to the health snapshot, for example, that's come from My Health, My Community survey, and really helps us pinpoint where our areas were the one to focus policy programs and actions. There's a larger community health network that connects us to the region. And there's also opportunities that we've been able to leverage to strengthen our collaborations with Squamish Nation, with School District 48, and others in the region. And so the greatest outcome of our collaboration work in the last couple of years has been the OCP update. At the outset of the OCP update, we set an intention for developing an OCP that embedded health and resiliency lenses. And so to support this goal, we worked with the health authority and other collaborators, including See the Sky Community Services, the School District, Squamish Climate Action Network, and the Food Policy Council. And we got grant funding, and we hosted a whole bunch of deep dives through funding from the Plan H program. And these sessions really helped to augment and deepen the consultation in community on these health areas for the OCP. So this was precursor work that happened to the OCP work and really, really helped expand the outcome. And so we have been able to successfully integrate a health lens within our highest level community plan, your council policy playbook that we brought to you at the start of your term. And so health linkages are holistically embedded in the vision. Health is one of the five core goals, as you know, in the OCP. We've got specific objectives and policy, and we also even brought health into the defined performance indicators as part of our annual monitoring program, so that data piece. So, healthy OCP, we're on our way. There's the goals there. In terms of where we go from here, we just have a couple more slides to go. We've highlighted in the draft agreement both sort of ongoing, continued areas of focus, as well as new and emerging areas. And I want to highlight for council, these are things that are happening already within our work plans, within the district. Children and youth continue to be an important area, given our growing population. So we're continuing to do work on early learning and the childcare. Whoop, sorry, that was my time running a little bit. Trying to be very punctual. We're continuing to work on food, active transportation, accessibility, mobility, safeguards to school implementation. And then for council, we know that there's another area of interest, social connections, gathering places. So this is another kind of healthy community area. Looking ahead, new and emerging areas, these are to bring awareness to possible conversations. We don't have distinct projects identified within this agreement, with the exception of the My Health, My Community survey engagement. So we think that there are opportunities to engage and collaborate on substance use and mental health considerations, looking at harm reduction pieces, as well as to improve health impact review considerations in our development planning ongoing, and then the My Health, My Community survey that Jeff spoke to speak to. So we just have two more slides, if council's okay to go through those, and then we'll open it up for discussion.
Okay, great. So I thought we'd go a little bit deeper into My Health, My Community, as that was one of the projects. And I think this is also a survey that was developed back in 2013 that has really provided data to drive a lot of the healthy community initiatives. We've had very positive responses from local government. What's unique about this survey is that while there are other health and wellness surveys out there, this really provides that local data, and that data over time as well, not that this is the second round. So it can really help drive local policy. It was very successful last time around. Overall, we had 30,000 respondents across the region, so making it a very large survey. And it covers a broad range of more upstream determinants. You'll see here, this kind of covers some of the initial categories that were included in 2013, from socio-demographics to the built environment and community belonging. So you might see a number of relevant areas there to some of the priorities that council might have. This helps us understanding the determinants of chronic disease and the burden, but also allows us to address some current and emerging issues. As we see in the upcoming survey, we also have more emphasis on substance use, on affordable housing, on affordable childcare. There's a lot, we're trying to have the survey respond to some of those more pressing, urgent topics right now in our communities. So just, this is an example of some of the, one of the reports that's generated from it for Squamish here. The survey will be launched in the fall, likely, we're still going through some of the process. And what we can see is that greater local participation means the better quality data that we'll have, and also the likelihood that we'll be able to drill down even deeper into neighborhood level data. If you've seen the reports for Vancouver, they were able to go down right to the neighborhoods. It's a bit more tougher in some of our smaller communities, because you need to have certain numbers for that. So how far we can dig down depends on the participation we have in the region. Targeting for about 4% of the total population of adults in the community. And we're really looking to our partners and community to help us increase the participation. So this is where we're trying to engage local governments, local organizations, to really get that participation, so we get that quality data that can drive policy. So that was just a quick little deep dive into My Health, My Community. I'm definitely open for any questions you might have, and I look forward to collaborating on this project.
Oh, yeah, right. So you received your invitation to the See the Sky Congress. So it'll be the second congress that we've had. It's built on a history of 10 years of congresses that were done on the North Shore. So the idea of a congress is inviting all of the elected folks, not just a few reps, from each of the communities, both the First Nations and the regional district and the communities. We also invite the MLAs and MPs and the school district. And this one is really going to be going more into the area of the middle years and early years, and looking at the stats, the new stats for this region. This is the first time that we did the middle years development survey with the school district. And so it really comes out with what are the factors that support children lead successful lives? And most of them, of course, don't fall into health services, and they don't fall into services. It's really what are the environment. So I think it'll be a really great event, and I'd like to encourage you guys to attend, and invite your colleagues from the other communities.
Thanks Claire. Squamish hosted the inaugural See the Sky Congress last year, no, the year before, in 2017.
Yeah, fall of 2017.
Yeah, exactly. And so we had a good outcome, and we're hoping to have more participation. And it's generously supported by Vancouver Coastal Health, so you got a free lunch. The recommendations that we've put together today are that the district of Squamish renewed its Healthy Community Collaboration Agreement with Vancouver Coastal Health for 2019 to 2021. And that's subject to input that we receive from you today, that we finalize the Healthy Community Agreement and continue to progress identified joint initiatives. And we welcome your questions, feedback, input. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, and I'll jump right into questions. We've already got a list of Mayor Elliot, if you'd like to start.
Yeah, a couple of questions. And so I know that we do the early childhood development indicator, and now we've done the youth survey, and then we survey adults. And is there a way that we can sort of bring them all together at a certain time of year, so we can see the whole picture? I know this next My Health, My Community will be in the fall. But for these congresses, it'd be interesting to see the results across the spectrum.
So we'll have the early years and the middle years covered, but the goal of having a full snapshot of all the data for Squamish is what you're looking for?
Yeah.
And I think that's something that we can.
We can work towards that.
Yeah, and through the chair to Mayor Elliot. I'd like to just also say that there are a lot of different data sources that are out there, and these are done by different organizations as well. Aligning the timing can be a little bit challenging that way, but I think what we do have control over is the presentation of that data. So I agree, like, looking at ways in which we can bring that together, I think is useful. Also say one of the other gaps that would be there, we've got the EDI for early childhood, then the MDI. And we also, the McCurry has come out recently as well, which will provide some of that data for that youth element. So that's where we read seven to 12. And we don't have access yet to the local data. Sometimes the McCurry Society presents it at the HSDA level, although we paid a little bit extra this time around to have it broken down to coastal rural, because we know our coastal urban and coastal rural populations are slightly different. So that report will come out. The school district also has access to their own district level data, but that is usually shared specifically with the school district. So I think we can look at how we can bring all this data together to create a better, more timely picture, I guess, at that point in time.
And then how do the emerging topics get wrapped into your agreement? Because I know we've got ongoing action items in some areas, but like, mental health is most off the side of the desk, kind of, isn't it? So we heard that from our youth last spring, and I know for adults it's an issue. So how do we start to, how do we know when the time is to do specific projects and then that work?
Through the chair, I think in the work that we've done to date around these different focus areas, for some of this emerging stuff, an opportunity will be presented, or a project that one partner will be working on, there's an opportunity to kind of align and get involved for the district around the mental health piece. And it certainly is showing up in a lot of the, like, in surveys and in engagement activities. At this point in time, we have not done as much collaborating with the VCH staff that are working as closely with mental health. But that's an area where we can kind of open that up, that discussion, and see if there are opportunities. I think we just have to be mindful of resourcing and whatnot as well. So that's always kind of the baseline, is, you know, what are activities that we're working on that can be augmented by this collaboration, and then vice versa. So things are just kind of emerging.
And through the chair, I'd also like to just comment on the mental health and mental wellness piece, is that also, when we look at the determinants and how to approach intervening around mental health and mental wellness issues in a community, a lot of it is focusing also on the determinants of it, which kind of is influenced by many of these different pieces. So we can apply that lens, as well as we approach our different projects, into how will this also improve the mental wellness in our community? If we look at physical activity, nutrition, things like that, by acting on those, we'll also be contributing to improving mental wellness in the community.
I have one more question, if that's right. I was just up north in Prince George speaking to the mayors that have been more affected by the fires in the last few years. And this whole idea of community connectedness and community resilience was a really important topic up there. And sort of the legacy stress and mental health issues that are not only lingering for their staff, but for their communities as a whole as they face another fire season. So do we have, there's also another conversation going on in the background around climate change in that the impacts will affect those most vulnerable first. And so when does that start to show up in terms of community resiliency, protecting the most vulnerable to the changes that are occurring around food systems? If we do have to evacuate, that impacts people who are most vulnerable. And then a piece of community resiliency, how do we come back from that? How do we look out for those that are most vulnerable as we go through these shifts? And I don't know whether there's ways to capture resiliency in the My Health, My Community survey, if there's tested questions around resiliency that exist. But it's something that I'm curious about now, in listening to my peers up north really struggle now with how you build that community when they know they're potentially facing another summer of fire.
Sure, so through the chair, I think that's a really good point. I think community connectedness has been raised in profile lately, and it's a very important part of the health of communities. In My Health, My Community, there are a few questions. We did look at social connectedness initially, and these are validated questions. Looking at a number of trusted acquaintances, and also your feeling of community belonging. There were a couple of specific questions for that. And we actually came out with a recent report on social connectedness and health, which really illustrated that association with health as well. We actually saw gradient effect, that the more you're socially connected, the more likely you were to report better health as well. So I think that really demonstrated the importance here. Going forward, we'll have those questions again. We also address some of the, we're going to have a climate piece in the new upcoming My Health, My Community as well, and also addressing emergency preparedness. So I think looking at all of those different questions together will maybe provide a profile. Some of these are new questions, we'll have to see what it's going to be like. But it does give us some opportunity to look at this in more depth.
Just to add to that, I find my, I know that Megan Latimer with Emergency Planning, that those vulnerability pieces are absolutely critical and embedded within the work that they're doing around evacuation planning and those kinds of things as well. So I think that shows up in our public health and safety and emergency management planning as well.
And I have councillor Race and councillor Anderson. Thank you. Could you go back to the priorities slide, please?
Yeah, so when I looked through that, and it's a bit more fleshed out in the report, but what I didn't see there was any reference to recreation or exercise. And I know there's a couple of slides that have kind of glanced at that, but, and I'm just wondering, is there an intersect here? Because I think, for example, of proposed expansion of Brennan Park, and one of the sections of that proposal is an area for a building, new structure that would be primarily for programming. And it occurred to me that that would be an opportunity for that kind of an intersect if it was going to happen. And I've always, I'm not medically trained, but I've always thought of recreation and exercise as being one of the key things that lead to wellness in our community. And so I just wondered if you could comment on that and where you see that happening.
For sure, through the chair. I think in our original 2015 agreement, if you look at the areas, recreation and healthy living and activity showed up a little bit more clearly. And I think there's an opportunity going forward to definitely highlight that as an area, as part of that kind of overall health and wellness piece, and also the work that Recreation Services staff, like Tim Hoskin, for example, has come to some of our staff-to-staff working sessions and are an opportunity. working sessions, and there are opportunities to strengthen their involvement and collaboration with the table. And there was something else I was going to say about that. But I think that would also can relate into the youth, the youth strategy as well, possibly with, because of the different projects that recreation is involved with.
Well, and we've had presentations over the last, certainly in the last term, dealing with not just youth, but we had people with disabilities and different challenges in programming that basically widens a whole recreation field and sort of leads to more of a better life and just helps the community. So I was just, didn't want to lose that. Didn't quite, I guess, see it there that clearly in the priorities, but I just wanted to highlight that.
That's great. And if Council would like us to, to sort of add that tease out a little bit more in the, in the final agreement, we are happy to do so.
If I can, yeah, I think, maybe there's more discussion, but for me, and particularly when we're talking about decisions around, for example, the expansion of Brennan Park and some of the things we might do, and it's not just adding ice sheet or expanding a pool, but one of the significant things for me at least was the expand program capabilities and all the different types of programming that might come in there. And it wouldn't all necessarily be yoga classes and gym classes and stuff like that. It would be just a little bit more diverse. And so I think we have those types of decisions going forward in discussions that we'll have. So I would, yeah, hopefully we can sort of mesh the two together.
Council Anderson?
Thank you. I'd like to touch on aspects of monitoring and measurement, and in particular relating to economic stress. And I'll start with the reference in the staff report to the economy and local jobs, pointing out that actions and policy focusing on housing, childcare, and poverty reduction all contribute to creating conditions for a healthy and sustainable local economy. But it's also vice versa, is it not? Whereas where economic stresses can contribute to health impacts. The last page of the report, the handout that you've got here, and this is community health indicators, noting under built environment, commute time. Commute time one way, 30-plus minutes is identified there as one of the things you're measuring. And this is, I suppose, a template for the entire Vancouver Coastal Health region. And Squamish and, for example, Fraser Valley, 30-plus minutes, that's a very well discussed phenomenon. And my interest is how that is tracked and how we're looking, looking at it to see its implications. It strikes me, this is just an observation, that that belongs not only under built environment, but up at the top under economic. That is, it's not only built environment, but land use planning and economic development planning as well. Now, I've lost track of my, my question I was going to ask. Excuse me for miss here. That is, how in your design of your survey that you're undertaking in fall of 2019, I understand, and I noted down, understanding the burden and determinant of chronic disease, how can we perhaps capture that or look for that or track it as an indicator? That long-distance commuting, local jobs versus, and housing ratio balance, local housing ratio balance?
So through the chair, so that's a really good point. I think you really demonstrate the interconnectedness among many of these things. I mean, it's kind of bidirectional. Economy can affect health, and health can affect economy and all these different pieces there. With regards to commute time there, that's a really good question. I don't think we've done the stratification to look at commute time versus some of the other indicators, but I think one of the powers of the survey is that when we do capture this data, we can cut it a whole bunch of different ways. So maybe we could look at commute time associated with some of the economic factors or some of the other health factors. I think those are possibilities here, and we always are, look to our communities to help direct some of our analyses. If there's certain questions that are out there, those are questions we can bring back to our team and our surveillance unit to see how we can, can, can look at the data that we've collected. So I think those are all possibilities there to cut it, and we do capture that data in here. And so maybe we can answer that question, but I don't, I don't think we've done that analysis yet. I don't know if we, if there's any other built environment piece?
Well, there was, the one way it was captured in the first, there is a special report around transportation and health, and it did say that the longer the commute, the less connected you are to your community and you're less likely to volunteer. So it has those impacts. I think, but back to what Jeff was saying, is that it is, there, there's a lot more research to be done, and that's the value of this survey. And especially as we have it a second time, we'll be able to learn so much more through the analyses that follow.
And just one, one other thing to just clarify when it comes to the survey is that since we cut it at one piece of time, we're unable to draw causation out of this. So we can't say that commute time causes this. What we can identify is that these are associated with. So, for example, you could say people with a long commute time are more likely to report this level of health, or, or, or are more likely to report that they have this level of income. We can do that. We can't draw the causation piece there, but we could, it still provides us with, with extra information to, to, to help generate new questions and new hypotheses.
Thank you. I'd like to ask also about youth. We've been discussing recently youth strategy here within the district, and we received a report just last week. And I asked the question regarding the status of our information on youth employment and also volunteering opportunity, for example, the key word being opportunity. When I grew up in Squamish, everybody at the age of 14, 15, 16 certainly had jobs in summertime. And I'm hoping, or would be hopeful that there would be that opportunity today, but I'm not sure, and I couldn't get an answer to that question. So my question is then, in the, your survey, your surveying strategy, how will you engage with youth and schools in particular to address issues like that?
So through the chair, so with respect to the My Health My Community survey, it will only capture adults over the age of 18. So with that one, we're not going to be able to capture those things like youth employment. However, there are other surveys out there that can perhaps capture some of this. I believe the McCreary survey for grade seven to 12 will have some of that information. Now, again, as I said, the report this time around has only been for the province, so I won't be able to capture some of the youth specific information that are more in the region right now, although I would look to our, our school district colleagues who have access more to the local data. There's also, if we look to the MDI, I mean, this, we're talking younger kids, but they will, it will give us a sense of some of the extracurricular activities as well in there. I don't think we'll be looking for them necessarily for work, but it gives that extracurricular piece and involvement. So, so I think some of these other surveys can help highlight some of those areas, but the My Health My Community survey won't address the youth questions.
So when I was 14, I wasn't all that enthusiastic about summer jobs and so on, but it seems to me that it's part of the community picture that's important, that it's important for us to be aware of and have knowledge about. Thank you.
I'll take an opportunity for a question myself. And I'm just looking at the list up here. I'm someone that has always sort of wondered about the distinction between mental health and health, and not so sure they're separate things, and not the first one to say that. But is there a reason why as a community, we wouldn't say, when we see, when we say health, we include mental health in that? And so mental health shouldn't be an additional ongoing bucket. It's part of what we mean when we say health. Is there a reason to keep it as a separate bucket versus just saying it's part of health and should be part of longer?
Maybe if I may just tackle initially, and then I, I know we'll touch up, we'd probably like to speak further to that. With their OCP, when we defined health, we were very careful to be quite holistic about the definition of health, meaning physical, mental wellness, health and wellness, social, spiritual, like, we were very inclusive of all those different kind of components of health. And so that was the, the tone that we were in, the framing that we did in the OCP. The reason why we are sort of calling it out here as a component is that there are interventions and resources and staff kind of working, like, the Coastal Health staff that are working in those roles. I don't want to speak further to that because we're inexperienced.
Yeah, no, I, I think it's a really good point. I mean, they're so interconnected. I mean, it's, we do separate it, I guess, in part so that we can focus on, on different parts of, of health. And I think by separating, it allows us to direct some of our attention to that. But it is embedded in all of this, just like a lot of other pieces of health. So I think if we want to separate it, it may just be on a practical point of view to, to make sure that, that we prioritize that component of health. But I think, I think it could be illustrated in a more holistic manner as well. I think, yeah.
I think the prevention, like all, all of the health promotion, it's the same, it's the same material. And, and I think that's, that's your point, and that's the point that Jeff made earlier. It's when it gets into, when there's already problems, it gets sorted out, separated into different disciplines. I think often we include mental health as a reminder that that is what we're talking about, because often when people think physical health, they, when they think health, they go to physical health. So sometimes it's just a reminder, but I think how we frame this is really important, that it is, that we're looking at both. And the, the effects of both, what's really nice is the new research that's really showing how strong an impact that mental health and social connections have on health, on, on physical health has really allowed us to elevate the issue that wasn't talked about before.
And just something around the terms that we use there as well. I mean, when we often talk about mental health, that kind of captures a portion of it as well. You'll hear the term mental wellness brought out a lot more as well, because when we talk about mental health, we're often thinking about the presence or absence of mental health conditions, whereas mental wellness is a little bit more holistic. So I think there's different ways to capture the full scope of, of, of our mental, mental health and wellness and physical health. So I think that would be then for, for discussion on how to include it within the priorities.
Eric?
Do you have ways to, I mean, the federal government has changed the child benefit. Do you have ways to correlate changes in the data we're seeing with some of the changes that are happening at a much higher level? Because we know that, you know, to be food secure, you just need to not be poor, right? You need enough to buy food. It doesn't matter how many community gardens we plant, that's about social connectivity, but for people to buy food, they need money. So is there a way to correlate the changes that happen at a single level with what we see at the local level?
So I can, I can maybe touch on that. So through the chair, I, that's a really good question. I would love to be able to do that more with policy. I think it's very difficult to, because there's so many things that influence some of our indicators around health. We could look over time and say, okay, if we did a survey here, and then the policy changed in the survey after, like, was it correlated? We might be able to hypothesize that it was, but to really prove that it caused that change can be very difficult. I think there, there are certain studies out there, often you hear things like time series studies that look at a change at a point in time and how an indicator changed. So some research goes into that. But with regards to something like the childcare benefit and the data that we collect, I think it would be quite tough to really prove that, that causative effect.
Through the chair, I think the, the nice thing that we've got here is the, the human early learning partnership. So the EDI, the Early Development Index, that is, happens on a regular basis, is an incredible resource to try and capture some of those changes. And I believe with this round of the My Health My Community, there's a few more questions around parenting. We still don't, and trying to capture some of that. So there'll be a little, we've got the data of the, the UBC, the Human Early Learning Partnership, and then I think a little bit more through the My Health My Community.
Councilor?
This might go back to Mayor Elliot's earlier question, but in terms of, you've said a few times, there are a number of different data sources, and the My Health My Community is one survey of mine. So who is responsible for integrating the data?
I can, I can speak to that, so through the chair. So that's, that's a really good question, and I think it's one I've heard at many different tables, because we struggle when it's coming from so many different sources. I know internally, we're looking at how do we integrate this data? Part of my role is in, in population health assessment. I mean, it's, it's embedded into the role through legislation is to assess the health of my population, so I collect all these different sources together. How that's then reported can be different in, by different medical health offices and different health systems. So I think we're looking at how we can do that, some of it's through reports to local poli, local governments, other local organizations. I think that would be a really good discussion to have, to make sure that when we do integrate all this data, how are we providing it to our stakeholders so that it's the most effective? So I'd definitely be interested in having that discussion more.
If I might just add as well, I mean, similarly for the local government, for the district of Squamish, we're having similar conversations about how internally we are accessing and making sense of data more and more, and becoming more data literate around the health data, and what are the opportunities to guard the data, and how does that actually inform our actions and intentions? And so just as a reminder for Council, too, one thing that we're doing right now through our OCP performance measurement, new framework in the OCP is activating that and establishing basically a bit of a dashboard where we've got the 3D indicators. They were informed and vetted by the health authority as well. So we've got air quality data, we've got natural areas in part, and we have housing indicators, neighborhood based food assets. So we've basically tried to look at those sort of diverse healthy community areas also and pulled a number of indicators into those that we have set intention to measure and monitor over time. And there might be some shifts in new data or data that's not as relevant or meaningful that we end up sort of switching out, but the data piece is really important for us. We're looking closely at how to keep on that.
Just a little bit of my follow-up question.
So I think, just looking at the time, there's a question, I believe, about whether or not we add programming or rec, exercise, something in that ballpark to this list. Do you have agreement on that, or do you want to clarify, Council Race, what we're thinking issue?
Well, just, just to, just to ensure, I guess, it's sort of front and center, because I think we have a lot of decisions as a council going forward. For example, around the Beishmi Core Building, like, we're talking about the program and so forth. And so I think one of the things that would feed into that decision would certainly be this collaboration. And I think it's more a matter for me of just keeping it front and center. If there are specific things, they can come forward, but I just, just want to be sure that that kind of is part of our decision-making going forward. It's not just where it's playing, there's a, there's a wellness issue that we have to always keep in mind with these conference decisions. And I'm not sure if you express it from this in so many words, or how you deal with that.
Mayor Elliot?
Perhaps to build on Council Race's point is that part of social connections is built through health and wellness activities. And if, if that language in the agreement is supporting both our young and our young at heart, like, we want to cover that whole age spectrum in our community. And so, you know, wellness activities, things that bring people into the community to participate, I think are an important part of social connectivity. Maybe one area that we, we capture that, because I don't want Brennan Park just to be about sports. It should be about wellness.
Through the chair, I think also, we, when we develop the OCP, and if you look to the parks and recreation kind of component in our community plan, there's a lot of, kind of new intention setting for Brennan Park as well, and in terms of integrating health and wellness, arts, arts and creativity, and sort of all these different components. And so that will show up in, in master planning looking forward to that facility. And so it's just, there's an opportunity, I think, in the collaborative agreement to make note of this so that it's not lost.
And I didn't want to just focus on Brennan Park. I mean, I use that as an example, but I think there's, there's going to be other decisions, more or less in the same vein throughout the period. So it's not, for me, it's not just Brennan Park. That's just one, it's a big expensive example, but it's, it's a large, yeah.
It's a big project, yes.
So, Ms. Jenklin, if, given this discussion, if we pass the recommendation as, as written, do you have what we need for clarity, or do you need us to articulate more formally some of this discussion, as you said?
Yeah. Thank you, Councilor Penagel. I think it might be helpful to add an amendment to the motion, perhaps, just to capture more formally the council's desire to add active, I'm just trying to make sure I'm framing it correctly, active living and recreation opportunities. I'm not sure that I'm capturing it exactly, but I am. Active.
The, the second motion does say in that subject to input received that April 9th joint meeting staff finalized the healthy community partnership. So I think. So I think if you're clear on the feedback that you've received, that the second motion stands without being altered.
And we can go on.
I mean, I imagine the final agreement's coming back to us for endorsement anyway in the regular council, but you know.
We can bring it back for final.
Okay, so can I have someone just put forward their recommendation? Council race, you also prefer, and she wants to too.
No, I'm fine, I get it.
I just really appreciate all the work here and it really helps inform us in such a holistic way because all these things are so interconnected. So I have to support this and afford to see some more data.
Anyone else? Call the question, all those in favor, you want to post, motion carries.
Thanks, Councilor, we'll see you at the Healthy Communities Congress.
We have a short review.
Yes, I'll just come back at 10:00. So welcome back everyone to the committee hall. Before we jump in, I'm going to give the call to Mayor Elliot for a second.
I was going to say this at the beginning and I was a bit late for the meeting, but Niels Jensen passed away, former mayor of Lyons, or not Lyons, Opay. And I met him several times in my first term. He was a good man. He was one of those dedicated local politicians that always had time for other people. He went above and beyond all the time. So he did run for mayor, so this has happened quite suddenly. He passed away of cancer. He wasn't successful last term, but he'll be next in local government circles. So just wanted to acknowledge his passing.
Okay, great. And we'll pass it over to Ms. Goldbeck now.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor Council. My name is Natasha Goldbeck. I'm the Senior Director of Community Services. And we have such a fantastic, large group of partners with us today. I might ask everybody to introduce themselves. The uniforms are for a reason to show that there's authority in the room and so that everybody will take this seriously. And I should also mention that Fire Chief Stoner and Deputy Chief Butt would have liked to be here today, but they were tied up understandably due to yesterday's events. So maybe we can start here.
Yes, Scott Shaw McLaren. I'm the Resource Manager for Regional Operations of the Forestlands and Natural Resource Operations. So responsible for all crown land outside of visa parks.
Tomoskin, Director of Recreation Services, District of Squamish.
Chris Baker, File Supervisor, District of Squamish.
Gareth Bradley, Acting Staff Sergeant for the RCMP in Squamish.
Simon Gravel, or Simon Gravel, as you wish. Sergeant for the Conservation Officer Service, City Sky Zone.
Sean Vickersen, it's a natural resource officer. And we look at basically crown land, water, forest and wildfire legislation on crown land.
Toby Ford Kelsey, I'm Chair of Squamish Access Society, which is the climbers advocacy group.
Thank you, everybody. So just to sort of introduce the issue, recreation-driven tourism and camping is a significant part of Squamish's identity. It is a signifier of being some hardwired for adventure and it is a tourism driver, an economic tourism driver for the community. A good portion of the tourism that we get seasonally that's recreation-driven is camping and it is camping often outside of designated campgrounds for free, usually on crown land or land that is perceived to be held by the crown. This is sometimes referred to as wild camping or freedom camping and it's associated with recreation-driven activities, particularly climbing, but certainly not limited to climbing. And the province does provide permission for people to camp for free on crown land. This is administered through the Land Act and it's up to 14 days, subject to adherence to other regulations about the way people camp, adhering to no trace principles. The intention of the policy is to enable camping in a really dispersed way, although as the volume of camping and concentration has gone up in the City Sky Corridor over the last number of years, the dispersness has diminished and with it has the impact of camping, both social and environmental, has gone up. So the impacts have gone up with the increase in volume and so the district has really started to look at this issue seriously, the issues like wildlife interface, waste management, including human waste and neighborhood issues, neighborhood interface issues in particular. You can see on the slide here, there's an image of sort of what the ideal state of crown land, freedom camping is in the sort of ban life emblematic picture. And then on the other side is often the kind of thing that we see after recreation-driven campers leave a site. Certainly not always, but it happens more and more as the concentration goes up. So teamwork was a really important part of this work. As you can see, we have a lot of partners at the table with us who have contributed their expertise and their time to this issue and this discussion. Nobody sort of owns this issue. This is a jurisdictionally complicated situation and so we really had to work together to unpack the complexities of authority. So we worked with our partners in Flynnrow, Conservation Officer Service, the Squamish Nation, the Access Society, RCMP, fire rescue and others to understand the dynamics at play and try to arrive at a solution that would mitigate the harms of this practice without just sort of moving the problem and striking the right balance to preserve access and the economic and cultural benefit. So last year, we put out some, we worked together, we put out some joint messaging with our colleagues at Flynnrow and the Access Society and we did do some very proactive, coordinated enforcement. We had weekly sort of virtual EOC calls on Thursday mornings throughout the camping season where we'd call in, we'd say, where are the issues? What are you seeing? What's the plan for managing this issue over the weekend? And we would sort of coordinate in that way. And we also put out this messaging about the sort of hotspots where camping is not tolerated. So you can see the areas that we've identified and read there are where the greatest economic and, economic, environmental and social interface issues exist. Downtown the Spit and Mancom Forest Service Road. That also tends to be where people concentrate in crown land camping. So that was somewhat effective. However, there are, there continue to be issues with authority to enforce on the bylaw perspective. So I'll just make a few comments here about the authority and legislation around this issue. The permissions policy in the Land Act, as I mentioned, it does provide permission for people to camp for free on crown land for up to 14 days. However, the Act does specifically limit the permission within the boundaries of a municipality. So some people who are exercising the right to camp on crown land are aware of this limitation and some are not. But camping on crown land within the municipality in Squamish has been sort of effectively allowed for as long as everybody has been doing it because we don't, as Squamish bylaw enforcement officers, have a regulatory bylaw to enable us to enforce this limitation that already exists. In developing the bylaw, the objective had been to enable the practice of seasonal recreation-driven camping, but to mitigate the social and environmental impacts and also to be optimally effective with our existing enforcement resources. Priorities for enforcement, we certainly can't be everywhere all the time, but it will remain like last year, the areas that do have the greatest social and environmental impact, as I mentioned, downtown the Spit and the Mancom Forest Service Road. Although we expect that the use of our enforcement resources will be more effective this year because we will have the authority to, for example, write tickets for contravention of the bylaw should we go forward. We have proposed a couple of areas that will be exempt from enforcement. And so you can see in the package, and I have this full map and another image for the discussion if you want to bring it up. These areas are exempt from enforcement because they've been identified as being able to accommodate some free camping because we know that the demand is not going away. And as I mentioned, there is a benefit to the community. People want to have access to crown land camping as long as the harms are mitigated. So in this model, campers will be limited to these two sort of contained locations within the municipality, outside of the municipality, they can go wherever they like. And so monitoring and managing impacting this model will be more realistic. Staff are not recommending any infrastructure at this time at these sites, but we are going to work with our partners to monitor usage patterns and needs and potentially we'll have to look at adding some infrastructure in these sites going forward. We want to be consistent with our enforcement practices. So the proposed bylaw is going to apply to all public land, including municipal parks, and therefore it'll repeal the existing parks use bylaw should we go ahead. That will prevent confusion and loopholing. The language is slightly different and so this makes it consistent across the board. Bylaw enforcement officers are currently and will be continued to direct to use enforcement discretion to ensure that they're not penalizing people who are camping or living outdoors because of economic hardship or because of mental health and addiction issues. And bylaw enforcement officers currently and will continue to work closely with Squamish Health and Helping Hands and other support organizations to make sure that people who are living outdoors due to economic hardship or other social barriers are offered support instead of tickets. So next steps and then I'm sure we'll want to have some discussion. Pending council feedback, we would like to go forward to first three readings of this bylaw. If this is the direction council wishes to go, we will work towards a MOU with our provincial partners about the sort of principles of management and monitoring the impact going forward so that we're all, we're not sure what exactly the impact is going to be. We can anticipate, but there may be some unintended consequences. And so to have a principle-based agreement that we're going to monitor this and manage it together, that this is a shared issue, is a critical part of implementation. So if we're going ahead, that will be the next steps of the province. And with that, I'll turn it over to council for questions.
Council French? For the locations that you've identified as foundations and pit, you indicated no resources at this time, not even portable toilets?
No, it's, there is facilities nearby for both sites. Realistically, currently, people who are camping in those areas are, do not have toilets available to them. The practice of no trace camping is variable and takes some education and some enforcement. So that's part of the plan. If these are heavily used sites, we anticipate that there may be a demand for a composting toilet or some sort of facilities of that nature going forward.
So when you say resources nearby, so at foundations, that would be?
Cat Lake.
Burn Lake?
Cat Lake, okay.
And the pit location, I don't know of anything that's nearby.
There's the rep site, right, the RACU rep site. That would house.
Council Race?
Thank you. So that's interesting because, I mean, two of the concerns I have is garbage and fire. And so garbage, it seems you could deal with to avoid things like the picture with just putting a bin there, which is, to me, is relatively simple. Maybe I'm missing something, but it seems relatively simple to just have some facility where the garbage could go so that they're not putting it in their car and carrying 20 kilometers to the nearest garbage can and maybe people will use it more. The fire thing, how do we deal with that? Because I think that's, as we go on, it seems to become more of a problem each summer or potentially a problem with the drying out in the summer. Do we have any kind of a strategy to deal with that aspect of it, with these exempt areas?
Yes, so, yeah.
I think we would be able to focus, if it is just a couple of areas, then one of the benefits would be to be able to focus patrols there. So as soon as a ban goes out, to be able to have bylaw of fire go out and educate and then, and then with the understanding that there would be some follow-up patrols to make sure that there's, that there is compliance. But by focusing it to a couple of areas, it makes it a lot easier to educate and enforce than to have it dispersed throughout, throughout the district.
And if we adopt this bylaw, and I take that point, I agree with that, but there's still going to be people that are camping outside of those areas. Do we have any kind of policy around how we would enforce it or is it the province would enforce it? Who would enforce it within municipal boundaries? If it was crown land, not one of those exempt areas where people were camping? What position would we take?
So in the bylaw, we're hoping to name, so the bylaw enforcement officers would have the ability to write this ticket, but then by naming peace officers as well, then that includes the rest of our partners. So depending on who's in the area, it'll be a tool that natural resource officers, conservation officers could also use. And, you know, thinking about the risk, like the fire risk, camping, dealing with the camping is one way, it's more fire risk, public safety to do with public health and wildlife concerns that are the sort of root nuisances that we're trying to deal with. But by dealing with campers and directing campers to designated areas, that makes those issues easier to control with the resources that our agencies have.
So the education piece is important to me. So Council French mentioned, you know, will they have access to toilets? Council Race said, shouldn't we just put a garbage in there? The whole point of being able to camp on crown land is to exercise your right to do no trace camping, but I think a lot of people don't know what that is or they just blatantly don't want to put the effort into doing that. So what's the education piece that goes along with the foundation site, with a pit site, or just generally for people coming into the community?
You know, we did do some good education last year about no trace camping and what that means and certainly there's opportunities for more proactive engagement in campers at the site that you, as, you know, officers show up and say like, hey, you know, this isn't in compliance, but let me show you how to do it or here's some resources to help you learn how to properly dispose of your waste or, you know, be very smart or, you know, whatever the issue is. A public education plan is an important part of the rollout here, not just for our, you know, people locally, but we know that lots of these people come from other areas. And so getting out onto the discussion forums and the, you know, social media sites where people are planning their visit and getting that messaging out is an important part of it.
So is that calling on us?
Yes, you will be that.
My other question is, which other recreation groups are at the table?
In addition to the Access Society?
So we know that there's mountain bikers that have tents on the back of their trucks and they're camping up on the access roads to the trails. We know that some of the camping on the Spit is because of kite quarters. So are they at the table and are they going to participate in education and monitoring?
We have a few people from the one place society here with us. Would you like to come to the table and run us a lap?
Do I have to sit up there or do I just?
You do because of the mic.
Do I need another chair?
Thank you. I'm Jeffrey Waterston, President of the Squamish Twins Fall Society. Yeah, we've been involved with the district, we're actually in the process of renegotiating our lease for the coming summer and part of that is around the camping that happens on the Spit. So, you know, ideally, we would want to see it banned because of, because of the noise or obviously environmental issues as well. But yeah, we're certainly at the table to help, we've been in a discussion with Squamish Access Society and Sorka as well on how we can tackle these together.
And we've also had some light engagement with Sorka on this, not as indepth as we have with the Squamish Access Society for sure, but implementation is, but engaging with all of our partners. So certainly we're involved in those. We have a good organization in our own relationship with them, so I think it's a foundation to go with.
My last question is, there's now court precedents about camping in public parks. I know that our officers will exercise their discretion, but I want to make sure the language of our new bylaw is not written in such a way that we're going against some of those court precedents that now exist.
Absolutely. Have we compared our wording to where these court decisions have been made? We have, yeah. So the, I suggest also discretionary enforcement is certainly a part of it. A second point I'd make around that is that we're not really in a situation in Squamish that people are being turned away from shelters. That's thankfully not where we're as other communities are, and so the idea that there is no other place to go from a sort of legal threshold perspective is not met in Squamish. And then additionally, having these exempt areas is another sort of threshold that's not met that you could say there is a place to go. Luckily, we're not in that position, because that is not how we enforce homelessness. But if it came to that down the road, we would have the exempt areas to protect us from it.
Oh, if I could speak, I just have one, just wanted to briefly, I probably shouldn't be speaking for Sorka, but I think the reason Sorka weren't particularly involved is because the areas where mountain bikers typically camp are actually outside the municipality. So if you go up Garibaldi Park Road, there are a number of pullouts, parking lots and so forth, but those are all, and people do camp there overnight in vans, but those are outside the municipality, so they don't really fall into this context.
Thank you. Thank you. Merely, it touched on some of the stuff as far as just the different user groups. I'm concerned about the, at Cat Lake, it was presented in the report as an easier place to access. I went down that road fairly recently and decided that it was too much for my little thing, which I've taken some weird places, so I don't know that it's that accessible. And a group that's left out there is the Squamish Bike Society, or the SDVA, and I'm really worried about user conflict. So this is one place we've been able to send, or where the moto community has been able to exist, and they're not necessarily mesh as smoothly as we would think with some of the, with some of the other user groups we might be directing there. So I feel like that particular location is kind of setting us up for some other levels of conflict, and which can have all sorts of knock-on effects. If it's not such a good place to ride a verified bike, you load it up, if you ride from home and go on to various other places, we don't want to have them. So as much as having a place to direct the activity, in this case camping, we've already done that with off-road motorcycles to that area. So that seems like a bit of a collision to me. Is there any thought, or has that been considered in this, and how is that going to be addressed?
These are great questions. So, the access is relative to the other exempt area, which is nine kilometers down the FSR, and you do need a four-wheel drive vehicle to get there, depending on how much care about your car, I guess. And so having something a little bit lighter and a little bit quicker to access, even though it is far away from the typical camping concentration spots, did seem like there would be a benefit. The usage interface is certainly something that we'll have to watch and work with our groups and see if we can come to some kind of agreement about harmonious shared space usage. There were not very many spaces that were appropriate for this kind of use. We wanted to manage the environmental and the wildlife interface issues, obviously, as well as the neighborhood conflict. So having something that's sort of far away from the neighborhood, a big clear flat-ish site that can accommodate a number of vehicles to make it sort of worth it, and on crown land within municipal boundary, there wouldn't be a lot of options. So if, nothing is perfect, this is something to try. If any council, you know, feels like that's too much of a risk to put these groups, you know, in a situation that we need to figure out harmonious shared use, then, you know, certainly we can change that.
Also, the location, the access off the highway is, I know it's already a busy spot, but we're talking about large numbers, which is why we're all sitting here today, because it is a large number. We're going to direct people there, and I know there's a lot of left turn coming out of Cat Lake, which is, let's just be honest, about 90, I don't know, it's fast and it's on S-bends, and the nearest turnaround to get back to town is at Burn Lake, which is overloaded. So I have a lot of concerns about that particular spot. I know it'd be nice if I could come up with another suggestion, but I'm really concerned about that spot, highway access. And if you're going to leave there on a Saturday morning and do it lawfully, you're turning northbound on the highway, your next turnaround is at Burn Lake, which people are already parked down the side of the highway to do, where's the next turnaround? You can't get into that park without to turn around.
It's the Salt Shit Alley.
Salt Shit, how many kilometers is that?
Legal turnaround.
Yes, it's, it's a overloaded spot, I'm really concerned about just telling people to go there without doing something to make it safer. And that's just from a traffic standpoint, never mind the other issues we talked about with the human waste and garbage. So that particular spot, I think is, I don't think it's a spot myself, but. And to the other issue, no one, like that's, no one agency or an important user group owns this issue, because it happens everywhere. Now, the, I see, I spend a lot of time out in the forest and I've come across people kind of everywhere doing this. So to Toby's point about up on Diamond Head, is there something that the other agencies could speak to about what direction's being done up there to deal with the exact same issue, albeit although slightly removed from the, removed from the district and slightly removed from the neighborhood, although? Is there anything being done in that regard?
Sean can speak to the enforcement, similar, but the province is currently looking at a lot of the recreation issues across our entire district and hiring resources to do a lot of recreation planning, and we have quite a bit of experience, albeit unsuccessful experience, in managing over recreation use and tourism growth in the area, but a lot of learnings from that, so we're firmly subscribed to the four E's of recreation management in engineering, enforcement, education, and evaluation of what's working and making changes with that. So while it's important to have enforcement tools, it's usually not the most successful as we've found. You need to have places for people to go to have the, that they want to go to, rather than necessarily pointing people in one direction. If they don't have a desire to be there, they'll do, they'll be not as successful. So we're looking at, we've got a couple pilots going on, changing the way that we actually manage, rather than for resources, but actually managing the people and what their desires and impacts are, and what we want to see in an area, and figure out what creates the flow and redirects the flow, rather than trying to either stop the flow or eliminate the problem, because we haven't had much success with that past. So areas like the road up to Ring Creek and the mountain biking areas, while not a super high priority yet, because of the, we haven't had major problems there compared to some of the other places in our large district. Certainly would be, Squamish as a whole is an area that I think the province and the municipality need to work together on a larger strategy around how do we actually do visitor use, because people aren't going to stop coming, and that's what makes this kind of desirable to live and to visit. So how do we look at all the, fill the needs and the demand, as well as having the tools to enforce when folks aren't necessarily meeting the expectations of enjoying the community. So, Sean, do you have any specific information?
I have a lot of information on these sorts of issues from the past five years in this role, but I guess the easiest thing to say is, the way that we approach it is, on the crown land piece outside of municipalities, there isn't a problem until there's a problem. So it's either a direct contravention or associated impacts are rising because of either overuse or just poor use by individuals or a series of individuals. So we will look for the big few issues, which are wildlife attractants and risks, fire risks, especially doing fire bans, and then garbage, which includes all the above as far as waste. So, and the perception of those issues as well. So we've been working closely with both the ARM and DOS as far as the interface areas, so what crown land interface on the boundary, as well as crown land within the municipality. We do have specific direction of the land act and how that works, and we do take a fairly, so the approach is educational, first sort of contact with a lot of folks, highlight the expectations, and in the summer, we, you know, the folks that are here are here for more than just a couple weeks, so it's easy to say, give a little bit of briefing to a group of people, and comment, it's like the Mamquand Forest Service Road. And then we do find that they actually, that message gets passed on. So sometimes to, you know, with poor outcomes and that, they'll start, oh, I'm going to manipulate this 14-day thing, I'm going to move around, but again, there's not necessarily a problem until there's an actual problem, a contravention or a perceived problem on the part of the public. And so that's how we've been approaching it. We're looking for those specific issues. There are a lot of questions still, some of the hotspots, and how to best address those, as Scott was highlighting, but there's a lot of people, and the issues sort of come along with that volume, so. Thank you. I'm sure I've got somebody else who'll tap out there, thank you.
Okay, over to councillor Sean.
Thank you. A question first about, do we have any indication of how successful our outreach was last season, even as like anecdotally?
Yeah, certainly complaints went down, so there was that. But it's, the volume was still higher last year than it was the year before, so, you know, people are coming. But I think their behavior was better managed.
Yeah, I think that's helpful, and I think that that outreach and the educational material that was built was very clear and very direct, and so I'd love to see more of that this year. I do really appreciate an education-first approach. I think the number of folks around this table just goes to show how complex this issue is. So thanks for all your hard work. For me, I think the key things are protecting the environmentally sensitive areas and then reducing neighborhood conflict, which I think this suggestion goes a part of the way. I do have concerns around concentrating people without giving them facilities, recognizing that they are there with the idea of trying to do the hashtag van life and no trace camping, but I also feel like people's expectations have shifted a little bit, and if we are going to move towards concentrating people, and I think we really need to give that a little bit more thought of, at least some sort of ways for skeptical. The other piece of that is, I'm curious on what conversations are with the province on moving towards a like really basic minimum campground facility somewhere on crown land or multiple. I know that there's been kind of conversations here and there, maybe mostly in the public in terms of like other particular areas where we could just send folks that are like bare minimum campgrounds, but kind of in this direction, but maybe a little bigger.
Certainly, discussions will be ongoing, and again, it's needing to, I think, have a bigger picture plan, planning look at it, but the struggle around here is certainly, while it appears like there's a lot of land, there's actually quite a shortage of land that's both safe to direct people to or not environmentally sensitive necessarily, but I do, the province, you know, our position would be that we need to find something that's actually desirable for those that are expecting, and so what is it, does it meet the demand, the particular demand? Because there's a full range of those that are, right from those that struggle to find homes, right up to those that have a lot of money and are willing to pay for a lot of facilities, and then in the spectrum in between somewhere. Where's the demand, and what are we meeting? And I think we need to look at a combination of private municipal and provincial crown land to find where those opportunities are, even if they're just temporary, year by year, like this year we're going to put them in this lot, perhaps with support deposits and things like that. But need to look at all the options in order to proceed there, so, yeah. The province, we struggle a little bit with the pit site around not expecting. If it was a desirable place to camp, there probably would be people handling that already, but the road is a challenge there as well, around maintenance, and potentially if you're hiding, it's not really hiding the problem, but when you make a problem, move people to more remotely, the ability to do other activities or create problems that become potentially more challenging to realize they're happening or force. There's a lot of different communities out there that struggle with this kind of issue, and there's a lot of different approaches out there, including other types of approaches, like making it right in the forefront, allowing it on the street between certain times of day, that way people can't hide and have nowhere to go and inappropriately defecate because they're on the street and people are watching, kind of thing. So there's lots of different options out there, so while we need some enforcement tools, we'll look at everything, so.
Can I add a couple comments? We did do a little bit of analysis last year about the sort of spectrum of available campgrounds that exist and where the gaps and capacities were, and certainly the sort of rustic, low amenity, low-cost campground was the area where there was opportunity. We did, incidentally, I think this might be important for council's thinking, discover that there was more capacity in the designated campgrounds than the story kind of goes. People imagine that all campsites are full all summer long, and we did an audit, and that actually was not true, there was lots of capacity. There was a couple of peak weekends that there wasn't much capacity, but there was throughout the summer plenty of space that would have almost accommodated what we were seeing in the crown land areas. So we do expect that some people will be relocating themselves, and rather than being on the FSR, for example, in some of the lower-cost camping options. Others who are, you know, really committed to the lifestyle of free camping, and that's a very legitimate choice, will choose to go further outside of municipal boundary into crown land, or potentially one of these designated exempt areas should we go forward with that.
Councillor Race?
Thank you. And I guess, I think Scott may be part of the answer to my question, but are people camping in these two sites now? Is there much camping around there?
Yeah.
I mean, not necessarily today, but just over the past summer?
Could I, if I could speak to that? And actually, just going back to previous point, the reason the pit site isn't used, I think, two reasons. One is it's quite a long way, it's a long way up the Forest Service Road. It would very much be saying to people, you need to move further out of town, here's a spot you can go to. And the more important reason is because of the big berm across the entrance, and a big boulder across the entrance, so it's unusable at the moment. And I think this goes back into the history of Squamish, probably 10, 20, 30 years ago, but this site used to be used as an illegal gun range, and therefore, and it was closed, my understanding is it was closed for that reason. So it isn't actually accessible, so it would need a minimum amount of opening to be, you know, still half a day with somebody with a, with some kind of, you know, digging device to open it up.
And the reason I ask that is just, I guess, how practical it would be, and maybe that's partly the answer to the question, to build, put a facility there, use the term facility loosely, but to put a space there for camping where there really are no facilities. And I wonder if that's practical in Squamish. I mean, I don't want to ban camping, and I don't want to stop people coming here and camping, and there's that level of tourism. But, you know, we've had the same issue in the regional district, and the worst example is Joffrey Lakes, which is just, we're all aware of the problems around that, but there's a lot of other areas as well. But there's a lot of other areas as well. We've had some presentations from different parts of the province, not Scott, but Dave Southern, for example, in Forest Street. And I don't think anybody's really come to a solution yet. But it seems that the closer you are to the highway and the access, the more controlled and the more regulated it just has to be. I mean, that's just the reality of it. And these sites, I mean, I guess you could say they're not close to the highway because it's very difficult to get there. We're not looking at just kilometers. But, you know, the whole of Swamish is relatively close to Highway 99. We're about 30 to 40 miles into that country. And so I'm just a little nervous about whether it's practical to do this. Are people going to use a site like this where there's maybe going to be, I think in the report, there was capacity for give or take 30 odd or 40 campers or camping groups. Are they going to use it? Is that going to be an attractive environment anyway? When you get that kind of, it's hardly now, you're not by yourself out in wilderness enjoying nature as much as now you're crowded into almost a little mini urban area with all of the issues that that brings up with garbage and conflict amongst themselves and waste and animal attractiveness and so forth coming. And you're relying on everybody in that area now to be bear smart and do all the things to avoid conflicts. And I'm just wondering if it's practical. I mean, I have no problem with the bylaw. I like the idea of trying to focus our resources in certain areas and try and control it that way. But is it possible to have one without facilities? And I don't know the answer to that. I guess we could just try it and see if it works out. But I'm thinking that if we're going to have these sites in Swamish to accommodate this level of tourism, we're going to have to have some facilities and some user term regulation, you know, some basic rules around waste management, for example. Because we are close to the access highway right now.
So I'm going to go to Counselor Anderson, I've got a question. And then I'll go to Counselor French.
Thank you. During our debate or community discussion last year on campgrounds, some of the participants, quite vigorous participants, were owners of private campgrounds. For example, I can recall in a correspondence from Rick Quasana of Klahani saying that on one day he went up the Mamquand Forest Service Road and counted 150 camping vehicles, whereas his site was half empty. So my question relates to, now their concern at that time was the prospect of district investment in facilities, which we're not, we're not discussing that infrastructure investment today. But I wondered about communication strategy. And of course, the communication strategy should identify those private opportunities, those commercial and other grounds like we have on Centennial Way, for example. So how do we communicate to visitors what we'd like to see in terms of practices and where they can go? And I'd like to acknowledge the contribution as a stream keeper spending many hours cleaning up in the Lower Stowamas with my colleagues after campers, the contribution of the Climbers Access Society and the communications work that they've done, and no doubt also being done by Win Sports and Circa as well. But what is the collective communication strategy? The reference in the report is budget or under budget is for signage. What about other media for reaching our visitors?
So just speaking, so Sean and Simone and I have worked on this very same issue when I used to work for the RMW. And so we redirected people towards like the Calcheck campground as that's the least expensive option inside the RMW. And one of the methods we had, we would give people pamphlets basically that had the names of all of the sites, so Riverside, every paid site, and the Calcheck, which is the least expensive rec site. So I think, I would imagine there'd be, a similar sort of system would work here. Every time we're out and talking to people, having the enforcement tool, it only adds to what we can do as far as education. But it'll always start with education. And directing people to designated sites definitely includes all of those paid sites as well as, you know, if like included amongst them, you know, could be these exempt areas. But I think, you know, like as long as we're providing people with a number of options, we're going to end up hitting, you know, the majority of people. And then if we need to change the plan going forward, we always, you know, we meet fairly frequently and we can always change things out. But does that answer your question?
No doubt, it is part of your ongoing strategy discussion. Thank you.
So I have Counselor French, Mayor Elliott, Counselor Heford. And then if there's time, I'll put myself in the last.
I acknowledge the work that has gone into this file so far. Clearly, we have a big group here and I know there's been some great meetings. And this is a process that was started by the previous council. So great work. And then I wonder if we've missed some things. And one of the things that jumps right out at me is the remoteness of the foundation site and the pit site. So were any sites closer to civilization evaluated in the process?
Yes.
Can we hear a little bit about those?
Yeah, absolutely. So the sites down the Mamquand Forest Service, this is really the concentration of people is down that road. There are pockets elsewhere, but that's the sort of bulk of it. Most of the land in the first, I would say, four kilometers, but I might not be quite right about that, is Swamish Nation owned. So that's not, it's not Crown land. Wouldn't be opportunities. The objective, one of the objectives of establishing camp, sort of exempt areas of far away from civilization is to minimize the neighborhood interface issues. That there was a site that was Crown land that was quite close to sort of the back of Valley Cliff that we looked at and which potentially could have been suitable, but probably would not have met the threshold of neighborhood acceptability. So we did not pursue it. Similarly, there were some other opportunities too on the edges of neighborhoods. Did not seem like the experience that campers wanted of being in the wilderness and potentially would have led to more challenges with our neighborhoods.
So when I put on the shoes of people who are camping in areas like out at the Spit or in the estuary, I'm thinking that those folks probably aren't going to be inclined to go that distance from the area that they're currently taking advantage of. And in this discussion, that had me thinking, maybe we need more consultation. But then as I listened to the discussion, where we could be headed is to approve this bylaw and as recommended, monitor and learn as we go and improve and adjust on the fly. And I tend to think that's probably where I'd like to see us go, knowing that I'm going to get feedback from people who are going to say, you should have consulted more. So delicate balance there. And also the delicate balance that exists between the commercial operators that are running at half capacity many summer weekends, while 150 people are out along various logging roads within the community. So I think I'll just end my thoughts with, counsel, do we consider more consultation before we take this step? I'm thinking we don't, but if there are other members of council who want to go that direction, I could be on board with that.
Mayor Elliott?
Thank you. Since people are already showing up to camp, I think we're going to have to go with learning from our experience this season. And I think there has been consultation and also engagement last summer. So I'm okay with this direction. Two things, was the area just outside of Alice Lake along the highway, there's a flat area there. Was that considered?
Yes, it is a hydro floor by the hall. And we were not allowed to help people have an idea of it.
Sorry, it's a little difficult to hear.
It's hydro, right.
And they had a response to the suggestion or?
They don't want to say.
Yes, thank you, Matt. Reminded we have a very important consideration, which is that it is in Chief Act and debris flow as it's on.
Well, that's.
Details, these planners.
Details, oh my gosh, okay. That helps. So we've been talking a lot about how do we educate visitors? How are we going to educate our locals? So who to call when they do have a complaint? If they want to camp locally with their family, council got a letter from a member of the community. It was like, hey, hold on a second, what if I just want to take my kids out and, you know, close to home, but feeling of the outdoors, like where's that happen for me? So how are we going to educate locals about this?
This is Chris, his number is six oh five. So certainly bylaw will be the recipient of the complaints from residents. And we want that because then we can coordinate our enforcement with our partners and we can get out there and educate and work with people who are camping in zones that are not tolerated. The, how are we going to work with our locals? As part of our community engagement and education plan, we're going to need to have different messaging and different resources for people who live here versus the visitors. So I did see that email as well and I get that. People do want to be able to have that experience. That's part of why we live here in Swamish. So I think we can provide for that. There is, as I mentioned, capacity in the existing campgrounds. And there is some options just outside of Crown land or just within the boundary from municipality. So we'll work with people on that.
Yeah, I think you should probably provide council numbers with Chris's number because those are the complaints we'll start getting in the coming months.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to this. This is, it's an opportunity.
Love your enthusiasm.
We've dealt with this before though, like these guys, we've really worked together on this. We started off, you know, meeting just in front of our trucks about five years ago. And because we'd all, all of our agencies have been getting calls about a certain problem and bouncing it back and forth. And then finally, all of us showed up. And it was different, our CP officer, but I'm sure Gareth's going to be great and right in there with us. But we all, we met four trucks and had to talk about, what do we do if we see this? And oh, you have this tool, that's interesting, we can't do that, how neat. And then since then, we've been doing, we do joint like wildlife attractants audits and camping patrols. And they've both offered to help out with how it's going to go down here. But with communications, looking forward to coming up with that plan and getting some pamphlets ready so that, and then also some education with our officers as far as the spiel we're going to be giving when we meet people. And yeah, this will be, it's going to take a lot of time, but it's not going to be a wasted effort because the word spreads once we get out there. And once we get out there and we have, yeah, an enforcement tool to use when we need to, which will be rarely, but it does come up in the conversations and it does help with the encouraging people to do the right thing.
So my last two questions are, does the arts and P have capacity to help on this file? And also, does the province want to put a little budget into improving those areas?
We definitely look forward to this bylaw and partnering with our partnership agencies. We do get quite a few calls up to the Mamquand Forest Service Road as we do for all the Forest Service Roads. I'm not sure if council's aware, but I'm doing some numbers checking. And if you take the daily average of all the Forest Service Roads, usage is adding 1,300 people per day to Swamish. So it's quite a lot. There's 12,000, over 12,000 people camping just in Swamish, chief camping there last year. Rock climbing and all the daily use. So we are looking at that, looking at the numbers and the usage. And yeah, it's a stretch, especially, I know we're talking about the municipal boundaries, but we go all the way up to the Elego. It's quite far, right, for our officers to respond to incidents that go up there. And, you know, there's about 114,000 people that go up there yearly, up to the Elego. I was looking at those numbers and I was like, wow, I had no idea. But yeah, it's increasing. So it's a stretch for us to police all the way up there and, you know, with the extra pressure from everybody coming from the city.
And does the province want to include some of those success rates?
Unlikely, it does not. That road does not meet a high enough ranking for our funding policy of what you can invest in Forest Service Roads, given the pressures of Forest Service Roads across the district. Our highest priority is communities and so is certainly communities down in Church. And then rural residences and then high value recreation is the lowest on the list. And generally, very limited money goes into the high value recreation, but there's certainly areas in the district that are high priority for funding. Most FSR maintenance is done by major licensees. So the road condition will depend on what the current industrial activity is in the area. And up the Mamquand currently does not have a big investment going on, but that certainly may change in the future as second timber comes online in that area.
So I have Counselor Heford and then Toby and just the others speaking. Just go back if you can think about if there's anything more you need from us. We'll come back to that. Counselor Heford?
Thank you. I know that the numbers that Gareth just provided, it's a lot of people. What's considered critical mass to actually being able to practice the no trace camping? Particularly, it's, from what I understand, my understanding of it is it's generally considered to be more dispersed. And there's someone there, there's someone there. There's not necessarily someone staying there. As soon as that person leaves, that spot being filled is more of a, meant to be more nomadic and not as concentrated. So I'm concerned about moving, I'm concerned about putting this concentration, although this concentration is already happening, which is why we're considering moving them. But we're moving them without putting any, considering putting any resources in. The budget asked was for some signage. I'm mostly concerned about the human waste of port bodies, that sort of thing, something that is, will get the next one first.
So your question about the critical mass of what's the threshold that no trace camping ticks over? I'm not sure if any research has been done about that.
Not a statistical answer by any means, but I would, you know, argue that the one RV being replaced the next day with the new RV is beyond the threshold of what would be no trace. And that's where certainly every mind that ponders this topic would go towards what's the facility situation. If I may, just quickly reflecting on last year, we would routinely patrol the Mamquand Forest Service Road and see the volumes of vehicles, et cetera. And one of the things that stood out to our working group that I had mentioned that some folks hadn't thought about is I actually quite liked the parking lot adjacent to the highway and adjacent to the chief, the lower chief lot at the head of the Mamquand Forest Service Road, being packed with van lifers because I had a captive audience to speak to and engage. There are no facilities there and there's a sensitive stream that runs into a local First Nation, you know, residential area. So it's obviously a hotspot. But, you know, when you see those, the front and center impacts, or sorry, front and centered gatherings, they're more easily managed, engaged, educated and otherwise. The expectations were clear. We were able to have a stern sort of finger wagging conversation about what tolerances there exists to be there. And again, we did this in partnership with, you know, Natasha's team and Chris as well. But again, you know, that's certainly not no trace. So when I spoke to van lifers, basically what I would highlight is that if it looks like you're just parking and you happen to also sleep in the vehicle and there's no lazy boys spilling out or waste visible or fires happening, those things are less likely to draw complaints. And you're more likely to be able to participate in, you know, your travels throughout the district or the province without drawing complaints and also literally contributing towards those negative impacts.
And to this slight amount of improvement to even gain access, like Toby's saying with the pit site, I have some similar concerns, although you can drive into the Cat Lake area, it's really rough. Is that just something that's in the work plan somewhere, it doesn't necessarily have a budget? I didn't see anything noted at all in the budget about any of that. I didn't see anything noted at all in the budget about any level of improvements to just access.
We've talked with our partners about how we're going to fund the line of remediations. We wanted to get through this step first and ensure that council was supportive of going this direction and if council is supportive and we're going to look at some kind of funding model that draws on our existing resources as well as some incoming or financial contributions from partner organizations.
And I'm, I'm just going to reiterate my concerns with the Cat Lake spot, the highway or off that access there is, is if you miss that turn, which is in a very well marked turn for the camping without some signage, you're going to probably Salt Shed to turn around or, you know, we're already in trail planning, that area is a high, the Dirtbike Association or the Dirtbike folks, like that's their, that's a spot that they've been using and we, I think over the years sort of established that and now we're moving another group of people to that similar spot and I have a lot of concerns with the Cat, particularly with the Cat Lake one. But I do see the advantages close to highway, which makes it easier to access and people like, do like to camp close to where they're going to do their, their activity, whether it be tech board and climbing, mountain biking, they're kind of have these pockets of where they are. So highway access makes it faster, but it's a very dangerous spot and I'm supportive of the overall concept that that spot has some big issues for me and I don't know what we can do to mitigate those.
Can I maybe test the next steps on that? So I think, I hear you and I, given that the volume of vehicles there is only, you know, potentially 20 or 30 at the most, that could, those people will be leaving every day because that's not right there by their activities, so it does increase the risk at that section of highway. I think what I'd like to do is talk to engineering about the traffic flow and maybe we can do a bit of an assessment and if there's any easy options to mitigate that, if we can, we can bring that back. If there are not, then we can consider taking it off the list if that's an issue. The other thing that I, just to, are we there yet councillor Penningill?
Go ahead.
Yeah, that I'd like just some clarity around is we certainly can look at putting in porta potties. That, the pit site in particular, getting to them to service them will be a challenge. However, I'm sure the market can provide some kind of solution for us. So I, we can investigate what that would look like and what the cost would be and we can bring it back to council if that's council's wish.
Sure, yeah, did you want to respond to that?
Yeah.
So I'll let Eric respond.
I'd rather see what happens. If people aren't going to go up there, then I don't want to put any money into it. And then I think we need to talk to our partners about what is, what is the solution halfway through the season if we see that there actually is demand for these sites and then we think about spending money, but I don't, I'm not really interested. I'm quite doubtful that people will go that far on that road, especially in some of the bands that are here, I'm sure they would make it. I'd very rather put a porta potty at the parking lot, chief, down below where people are actually camping, country camping. So I'd rather put it where people are going. So I'd rather just take a wait and see attitude initially. I'm also very curious about what MOTI says about promoting that as encouraging more traffic into that Cat Lake site and whether they would like to put up slower signs for part of the summer, which they won't want to do. They like the speed to continue through there, but I'm nervous about what they might have to say about encouraging 30 or 40 more campers in that area, which is already a gong show on weekends. So those are my thoughts. I think we have to take a learning approach this summer and just see what happens. You know, we did better last summer and I think this is an improvement on that, so we should just keep making those incremental changes and seeing how we go before we invest a lot of money. And I know the province has just done their survey on recreation in that area. I completed it.
What is it? Scorch Valley.
Scorch Valley. So all that information starts to inform where people might want to be and how much they want to spend and what kind of amenities they're looking for so that we can get it right in the future years. Yeah, so I'm happy to swing.
Councillor Perford?
I guess the counterpoint to that is drawing people to a place because we've given them something, a reason to go there. So we're just pushing them somewhere rather than pulling them somewhere with something. So I, which I guess we're considering a bylaw here as my enforcement and that can generally be a push, but I'd like to see a little bit of a pull to these spots where we can have something when they get there, even if it's a thanks for coming here, the bang or bylaw sign on the way in, that seems to fall within the budget of signage, but I think a few more facilities to assert thresholds. So I don't know if we can look at what the budgeting is on that and, but I think that to direct the people that are, or to affect the movement, I think we need to look at a pull approach rather than a push approach. So I'd like to see something in designated spots if we can look at the issues of the Cat Lake spot.
Toby and then councillor Stoner.
Yeah, mostly I just wanted to comment on the road item that came up a few minutes ago regarding the Mountain Forest Service Road. So I've driven up out there quite a few times with different people. The last time I went with Matt Gunn to look at the site, we were both actually surprised that the quality of the road was better, although we had no, we had no knowledge of why it was better. And then we did some investigation and we found that because of the Skook and Crete IPP, there is some work on the road that does take place sporadically. So it does, it does improve from time to time from that point of view. We also went at, the Swamish Act Society actually talked with a contractor about costs of maintaining that road at a low level and contrary to some other guidances we've given elsewhere, it did appear it was really of the order of 2,000 per year rather than, there really is a section of only a few hundred meters just beyond Raphael's Creek that is bad. So simply posturing on that from time to time would make that road navigable for non-clearance vehicles. I mean, the group we're really looking at is the sprinter van driving climber who is on the mountain for a service road at the moment, but you know, the 100 odd who are on there, we'd like, I mean, it'd be great to see a proportion of those actually paying to go to commercial campgrounds, but the ones who feel they want to move further up the road, I mean, they're not unaccustomed to driving on relatively difficult terrain, but they don't typically have clearance vehicles. Our sense is not that difficult to enable that site for that kind of use.
Thank you.
Just, actually, sorry, just one other thing I want to add to that is we, there was some comment on the province investing in campgrounds and actually two, three years ago, some money from the locals Swamish office was put into the Cheekmas Canyon Rec Site and that is now a free campsite that's typically used by climbers. So we have some, that is a minimum provision site, although there is a few outbursts. So we have some experience of how that, that site is used and it's been, last year was its first full year of usage and it was pretty much trouble free. And the main thing about it is there's no reason to be there except to camp and to climb. There isn't a lake, there isn't a river, there's nothing, there's no other draw, so it occupies that space between being somewhere where large groups of people would like to go and no one wants to go, seems to me, is where, you know, you need to, these kind of overflow sites should be positioned like that.
Thank you councillor Stoner.
Okay, thanks. To your questions, Natasha, I think although I was on once you brought up facilities earlier, I think the wait and see approach for this year is, is where I'm landing on that. Appreciate the need to try and create a bit of a pull, but thinking through the process of actually maintaining whatever facilities we put up there, I think the first day I can start doing that for my head and it'll probably get really high real quick. A piece of feedback with regards to the bylaws specifically, I know that in your presentation you spoke about discretionary enforcement and not focusing on folks with no tricks to dress. When I first read through the bylaw, it raised a lot of concerns, I mean, in terms of the language that's in there and it's quite strongly worded and that discretionary enforcement piece comes through in the bylaw. And so I would urge you to consider either integrating some of that language in some way, shape or form. I'm sorry, I don't have the suggestion for you off the top of my head, but I think it's important so that when people do read it and it's not necessarily those of us that are on the table, understand that that's part of it.
So I'll just, second, just to add to councillor Stoner's comment, my question would be maybe not for this discussion, but just to know whether or not when we're talking about discretion, is there sufficient guidance in terms of our values, our expectations so that just not sort of complete discretion out of an individual bylaw so that there's some understanding of what our expectations are in that? And I don't know if you want to comment or if you can.
Yeah, do tell me.
Yeah. So yeah, usually we'll develop a policy around, around this and then that will be, you know, we can, we'll discuss that with our partners and then also with the rest of my team. But in that policy, we'll definitely deal with, you know, what, you know, the steps as far as, you know, issuing a warning and then a ticket and then also, you know, if it's identified that you're dealing with a person that needs to be connected with community services, that'll all be, yeah, written into a policy. Generally that's not written into bylaws, but is dealt with on a, on a policy so that it's fair. This is our, you know, our enforcement option, but based on our policy, we have, we have other options to deal with specific situations as they, as they arise. So with that, what, there's also a lot to do here. Gareth?
From the staff recommendation?
Councillor Stoner, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, and opposed, motion carries. So let's take a five minute break, so sixteen after eleven. Well, back to everyone, can you put your hands up? Can you be the hole? And we are now on to tax rate bylaws discussion. So Chris Matthews, take it away.
Thank you very much councillor Penningill. Christine Matthews, Chief Financial Officer, and I have with me Russell Rowland, who is our financial analyst and together we're going to walk you through property taxation. Ta-da. Ta-da. How exciting. So our goal today is to give council a little bit of an orientation, we have a lot of new council members. Having said that, property tax is largely driven by legislation and pounds and pounds and pounds of it. So we won't, we will just barely graze the surface today and try to get you what you need to know to be more comfortable with actually giving us direction on setting tax rates today. What we are specifically looking for when we come out of today will be direction for our tax rates bylaw. We are going to ask you very specifically about port tax rate and we will touch base on other class four, right now we have no other major industry, but we're going to ask you if you'd like to set a rate for that anyway. And we also would like to get some confirmation for our other property class ratios and we'll discuss that more as we go through this in terms of what we mean by that and why we're honing in on ratios. So property tax 101, from a very, very high level. The community charter lists a number of revenue sources that municipalities are allowed to use and they essentially outline three forms of taxation that fall within our jurisdiction to impose. Property value tax, which you know as property tax, parcel tax, which we actually no longer have, and local service tax, which for us, we only use the business improvement area, local service area instrument right now. The, the property tax is the one that most of you are familiar with and it's an assessment based property taxation. So we get assessment values from B C assessment and those lands and improvements are used to set a tax rate and tax the community. A parcel tax is a tax that is more specific to parcels, so usually it's used for structures going in front of property or infrastructure going in front of property where a service is used or could be tapped into by a property. It is generally assessed on either frontage area or square footage area of the property or a range thereof. Local service areas are actually, can be either property value tax based or parcel tax based, but they designate just a specified area and specified service that we're taxing for. And they're used often for services where a neighborhood wants special services or services over and above municipal infrastructure for a very localized area and they're willing to pay for it. So right now, we, the only local service area we have is that the business improvement area in our downtown core is leveraging a type of local service tax where they can draw taxes, they, they work with us to make a bylaw and they draw taxes that they can use for various improvements downtown, types of economic drivers and things like that. So there's a group of them that can take that taxation parcel and use it and we tax the parcels of property under that bylaw, that very specified bylaw. So the legislation, community charter says that we must impose fees and taxes per the act and we cannot exempt property taxes for any particular property unless we use very specified instruments under the legislation. So there are statutory exemptions that the, that is basically driven from B C assessment authorities, so we get that information from them directly. That would be things like provincial municipal properties, federal crown type properties, native bands, hospitals, cemeteries, things like that can come under a statutory exemption. We also have, the councils here have their, some opportunity to set permissive tax exemptions. We do that in the fall and we have to provide that information to B C assessment authority by October. So for 2019, those have already been set by the council prior to you. There are very limited scope, but we can only give them to nonprofit agencies and generally we try to limit them to sports agencies where sports types, areas like our park, you know, that are helping parks or have park like property. We use them for land surrounding churches and some of those other gray areas where they might fit statutorily for the improvement, but maybe the land around them doesn't. Those are the types of things that we might leverage for permissive tax exemption. And then there's the revitalization tax exemptions where you may provide a bylaw for people to make improvements in specified areas. So you really want an area to maybe have some good economic reasons to regentrify from a business perspective or economic perspective. And so you might put revitalization tax exemption where if they make improvements to their property, you'll actually give them a tax rate over specified period. And again, has to be equitably set so that anyone can be party to it in those areas. And right now, we've mostly phased all of them out and we're just finishing, we have the revitalization tax exemption on the downtown oceanfront lands as part of an original agreement. So far they haven't tapped into that bylaw. So every year we are required by bylaw to impose property value taxes after the financial plan and before May 15th. So we actually have to pass them by May 14th. In those bylaws, we have to set our own tax rates. We're also required to set tax rates for some of the other areas that we're obliged to collect taxes for. And we collect taxes for a number of different agencies, the regional district, the regional hospital district, B C assessment authority, municipal finance authority and school taxes. Hopefully I didn't miss any. But we actually set rates for the regional district and the regional hospital district and we do that based on the hospital rates. So when they send us the requisition, we then crunch all their tax numbers and that rate has to be in our bylaw as well. And then we tax that on their behalf, collect it and remit it back to them. Rates are imposed on assessed values of lands and improvements, so this is property value tax. And so that's the basis under which we tax both and we can only set a single rate per property class. rate per property class. There are a couple situations, there are some options in the legislation, but they're fairly complicated, and most municipalities do not. So we are limited to a single rate per property class. That'll get interesting as we start to talk about rates, and you start to wonder how you help maybe a small business downtown without impacting maybe a large, big-box-type store somewhere else because they're both in the same business class. So those are some of the things you'll want to think about as you're trying to set rates today. And tax rates have to, we have to actually set tax rates based on the policy that was in your financial plan bylaw. So we try to keep it fairly generic, but about three years ago, we did move to trying to be very definitive with our, what we call our ratio or multiplier as a factor against residential, so that it was more stable. And we'll talk about that more as we move into this. But that's basically on Schedule B, Number B of your financial plan bylaw. It says the district is using a definitive class multiplier system originally based on B.C. averages. So that's sort of the parameter or policy around which we try to set rates, and we'll again, talk about that more as we get into the ratio-setting exercise. And actually, I'll talk about that then, too. So, the property taxation is really heavily prescribed. The administration and collections procedures are all governed by provincial law. And I guess one of the key orientation moments for you right now is that that leaves very limited jurisdiction for council. Essentially, your jurisdiction is to set rates and determine your tax policies and your ratios and set those rates. Once you get into, once the rates are set, then we basically kick into the legislation and all of our billing deadlines, all of our requirements, and how we bill, how we collect from people, how we penalize them or have them pay interest on properties thereafter, is really governed by provincial legislation. I, as your CFO, try to make sure you stay on the right side of all that legislation. So I think the key thing for you to take away from this is that it can be difficult sometimes when the deadline for taxation comes along, and people may contact you and be upset because they just incurred a fairly nasty penalty on the day after. And it can be for some really, really good and legitimate reasons. We've had people who sadly have had people pass away in their families and things like that. Unfortunately, the law is the law, and we are bound to treat every single taxpayer equitably and the same. It's kind of similar to CRA or, you know, income taxes. It's just, that is the deadline. And so please, if you get into those situations, just refer them back to us and recognize that unfortunately, it's not really your jurisdiction or call, and we'll bear the brunt of that for you, so if you pass it back. We also probably should just remind you that all taxes are due July 2nd. And because of the way the Interpretation Act is indicated, if that falls on a weekend or a staff, then it might be July 3rd or July 4th. It's the first working day after that date. And we are regulated to assess penalties. The British Columbia regulation is that we will assess penalties at 10% if you miss that July 2nd deadline. We actually, under Community Charter 235, and actually under legislation before the community charter, did have a bylaw that assessed the penalty at a 5% and 5%, which we've been allowed to carry on the grandfathered due. And that's similar to other sea-to-sky corridor municipalities. So we're still assessing a 10% penalty, but we give a little bit of leeway if you miss it on that first day. I think it's important to note, there's not a lot of time in between, so we don't put additional notices or anything in between, but it just helps that person that maybe missed it by a day, they're paying 5 instead of 10%. So that's a very specified legislation that we're operating under to be able to do. Another key indication, or key thing for you to understand is that our utility fees under Community Charter 258 are considered to be special fees. They're fees on properties. And we are therefore allowed to use the same remedies and the same tools that we use for taxation to collect those utility fees. So at the end of the year, at December 31st, any unpaid utility fees are moved on to the tax bill as tax arrears, and they will also be penalized at July 2nd if the flat fees are not paid. So that's some of the legislation guiding what we do. We also, in 2011, a consultant came in and did some work on best practices for a number of our financial planning, financial planning exercises. And so it was a report, it was a consultant's report providing guidelines. It has not been necessarily officially adopted as a policy per se, but we do use it every year when we go into our financial planning process. You may recall us talking about some of the elements of it when we started into financial planning. The two, there's a number that we talked about specifically in financial planning, which was that ideally, tax and user fees should sustain existing services. Prices should change with the cost of doing business, and we always want to ensure that those rates are high enough to provide adequate renewal of existing infrastructure. We want to use business cases if we are going to affect those interest rates, or those, sorry, tax rates substantially through new, or introducing new services. We want to maintain a relatively stable tax and user fee increase, so we try to plan to smooth impacts on taxes out. And we always try to phase in future increases. So those are some of the concepts we talked to you about at the time we did financial planning, because that's when we were deciding that revenue requirement, right? The guidelines, some of the things that you haven't had a chance to touch so much yet, which we're touching today, they had two other guidelines. It was ensure allocation of taxes is equitable and reflects the value of services provided, and maintain a business tax multiplier that encourages new business investment in Squamish. And they put a target at the time, 2.5 to 2.8 ratio. And just again, to indicate what a ratio and multiplier is, because I've used the term now and maybe haven't explained it to everybody, we base residential, the residential tax rate as the base for the ratio, so it's one. So if we have a rate that is maybe two times that, it's called the multiplier or the ratio. So say business is 2.73 ratio to residential, that's what we're referring to. So it's tax rate, if the ratio, or sorry, if the tax rate for general municipal, or sorry, for residential is, say it's two, then the multiplier for four, if that's the business rate, would be a ratio of two. Clear as mud? A little complicated, but hopefully you'll catch on to it a little bit better as we go on. I think one of the things that worries me a little bit about this initial guideline, I have struggled since I came in, this was done just before I came in, this policy was passed, or this guideline was passed. And I think one of the things I'll just caution you about is that, and the courts have supported this, we don't make a practice of trying to allocate the types of service each class uses to set tax rates. And the courts support, have supported that. Some major businesses or major industries have tried to lobby for that in the past, and the courts haven't really supported that concept either. So I think what we really want to focus on there is that the value of services provided. So if you consider the number of services provided out to the community, and what that monthly cost is, is that good value for what they get, is really where I think we need to hone in on this one. I don't know that we really could even in practice figure out the practicality of saying that this class draws that much more service than this class. That would be a pretty slippery slope. So I find this one, I think when we do transition it to a formal policy, this one, I'll be a little bit more careful with that language. So the property tax calculation, just to get into the nitty-gritty here, we're very fortunate in British Columbia in that we have an assessment authority, and they provide the assessed values for all properties in British Columbia. So we don't have to set it ourselves. In Alberta, where Mr. Russell came from, their municipalities actually had to set their assessment, assessment values. And so you can imagine that from municipality to municipality, that can change dramatically, can be subject to some influence. So we're very, very fortunate in British Columbia that a third party does this for us, and that they apply the same, the same lens on to how they're going to assess all properties. They have legislation around it, they have very prescribed approaches to it. And so we can feel fairly comfortable that most properties around the province are being treated fair and equitably. What the municipality does is we set the actual tax rate. And so we take the assessment value, we divide it by a thousand, and we apply the tax rate, and that becomes the municipal tax bill for each property. Okay? We determine that tax rate based on that tax requirement that we needed when we did our financial plan. So we need about $29 million worth of taxation. We take that revenue requirement, and then we have to try to recover that requirement based on the tax base, the assessment base, and we have to apply rates for each property class to try and make $29 million worth of property tax revenue. So when the community gets worried that their assessment rate goes up 20% or 30%, that can be very scary. It does not necessarily mean that their tax rates are going to up 20% to 30% because if the entire assessment base lifted by 20% to 30%, we would bring the tax rate down so that we still only collect the amount of revenue we require. Is that concept pretty comfortable for everybody? So, the, we are required to set tax rates by property class, which is much of the exercise we're going to do today. And the ratios is the class rate in relation to the residential tax rate, which is what we just talked about. We, three years ago, moved to trying to stabilize our ratios and trying to look at ratios in relation to the B.C. averages and other municipalities. Because rates, as you can imagine by the description I just gave you around how we assess rates, for every municipality could be all over the map because they supply different services, they have different assessment bases. So comparing rate to rate from municipality to municipality can be really challenging and generally not that useful. So what we try to do is compare ourselves to maybe other municipalities' ratios in terms of when they assess their tax rate for residential, how much do they maybe lift that for their business, their light industry, and that's that multiplier or ratio that we're trying to think about there. The beauty of that is that we used to actually change our rates, our ratios, all sorts of things, based on B.C. averages. Sometimes we'd apply it to the rate, sometimes we'd apply it to the ratio. And you can imagine that it made for some volatile results as we tried to get each class settled down based on these sort of targets. So again, three years ago, we said, well, look, let's get our philosophy square around our ratios. How do we feel about, you know, business being X against residential? How do we feel about light industry being Y against residential? And try to stabilize those, stick to those year over year, and then it will start to stabilize, and percentages should start to stabilize across the various classes. So that's part of the exercise we're going to do today, is to revisit with you some of those philosophies around ratios and try to settle in on what we'd like those metrics to be. The property tax assessments, there's two assessment values that we get from B.C. Assessment, well, there's more than that, but in December, we get what's called a completed role from B.C. Assessment. That sounds like it should be finished, but it's not actually. It's not the final one. They're, between the completed role and then March, the end of March, we just got the revised role. Various things can impact that. So they might have subdivisions, they might have appeals, or basic, people could have gone and talked to them about errors in their assessment. So the revised role is where we settle, and that's where we actually assess taxation from that base. Often, that base is a little bit lower than the completed role. So when we talk to you sometimes, or try to give you a little bit of a heads-up back in December, we're usually pretty close, but you can always expect that there's going to be a little bit of adjustment, and that's why we don't set the tax rates until we get to the revised role. So, a lot of things influence assessments. And we're going to talk to you a lot today about averages, so averages by class. And they have a place, but essentially, all an average is, is we take the total, for each class, we take the total assessment base, and we divide it by the number of folios in that class, and that becomes the average property. As you can imagine, take a business class, you're going to have businesses that are worth, you know, maybe a million dollars versus businesses that are worth several millions and millions of dollars, all lumped into that scenario. And so the average for those might be a business that doesn't even exist, frankly. But that's what we're kind of challenged to do. And in that average, it can be influenced by market influences as well. So if the assessment base went up, maybe it went up, had some growth component or a non-market component of $100,000, but it also grew exponentially in the market value of it, all of those things can roll into the average value, right? So if I had no assessment change for true growth, and I had a million dollars of assessment in year one, but the market value took it to 1.5, and I still have the same number of properties, say 10 or 100, you can see that that's going to make all of a sudden the average property look like it just leaped, you know, by a good band, and that's going to make it look like we increased taxes for that average property when we apply, say, the same tax rate as last year. So just telling you this because it's going to be, we're going to play around a lot with stats today, and I want to make sure that you kind of understand that sometimes they tell you a good story, and sometimes you have to look at them from a couple different angles to make sure you understand what they're saying. So assessments can be changed by a change within a neighborhood. So maybe only one neighborhood goes up exponentially. So about four or five years ago, Garibaldi Highlands went up ahead of everybody else. And all of a sudden, they were seeing tax rates that were higher than downtown and Brackendale and Valley Cliff. A year or so later, the same thing happened to Valley Cliff. So Garibaldi stabilized, and all of a sudden, Valley Cliff was moving up. And the year after that, it was Brackendale. I can't remember if Valley Cliff or Brackendale went first, but they hit it. Last year, it was downtown. That started hitting all our downtown, and this year, you'll see it's starting to impact Paradise Valley. So the others are stabilizing, and now Paradise Valley looks like it's bounding up. So this happens for residential, it also happens for businesses. The downtown core businesses have been impacted fairly heavily now because of the change in properties selling in the neighborhood that are growing up, right? So now the value or the highest best use of those properties become different. There's market influences now on them that maybe that one little building hasn't changed, but their value on the market has gone up. So you're going to see these fluctuate. We also have market changes within the range of housing. So single-family houses went up first. They're stabilizing now, have stabilized, and in fact, you'll see this year, won't eat a lot of this impact. But now your strata units are bearing the brunt. You're starting to see your businesses bearing the brunt. So those are the types of fluctuations that you start to see within your own assessment base. Even though maybe our whole market lifted 4% or 5%, the impacts on each of these sort of areas can vary. There's non-market change, and this is where the actual assessment base truly grows. So people make improvements to their property, or we add, we subdivide, so what was vacant land before, we put improvements on top, so the base is getting bigger. And that's some of the things we talked to you about when we keep referring to this non-market change or growth, right? What does the existing taxpayer, if everything was the same for them, would they go up as much? Or is that base getting bigger now and allowing them to take less of the pot? And the percentages can also be skewed. So if you consider every property may be increased by $100,000, but the first property started out at $500,000, and the second property started at $900,000, you can see that the percent lift in that would look like it's 20%, or, you know, 11% versus 20%. However, when we go to do the tax, that extra $100,000, they both share the same tax rate. So when the smoke clears, they're still seeing $300 change both properties despite that. So those are some of the things that you kind of got to get your head around, and the gymnastics around, and we start to throw percentages at you later today. gymnastics around, and we start to throw percentages at you later today. So, one of the things that's specific to municipality, well, some of the things that we also run into is there's restrictions or caps, legislated restrictions and caps on some of the tax rates that we can impose. So, one that is a blanket regulation for all municipalities across British Columbia is the utilities. In setting the tax rate or levy for Class II property, you have to use the lesser of $40 for each $1,000 of assessed value, or 2.5 times the rate applicable to Class VI, which is your business class. We are at A, so we have kept those utilities at a 40 tax rate. So, that's the maximum we can go, and that has been like that since I've come in here, so probably a long, long time. The only thing you need to understand about that is when you push down a revenue hit for everybody, it doesn't necessarily impact utilities because they're already at their rate max. So, if their assessment base didn't change, they're paying the same as last year regardless that other classes might have to absorb a lift or change. The other one that we have here in the district is the port. So, we are subject to the Port's Property Tax Act, and so is our port. That tax legislation requires that we cap out their tax rate, no higher than 27.5. So, that's the actual mill or tax rate. If they make improvements, they are subject or allowed to be assessed at 22.5. So, we actually have to break up their assessment value between their regular cost or their regular assessment value and then any new improvements. But because of that, because we're capped, the province, back in when this legislation was set up, I want to say 2003? Anyway, when that legislation was set up, I probably have it in my notes here somewhere, we were given some compensation for that having to cap out the rates, and that compensation now moves with us on our CPI index that the province tells us about. So, as of 2018, we were receiving $422,895 as sort of additional assessment or grant from the province to help compensate for that. This will become important to us as we go through the dock because that's one of the rates we want to talk to you about. Our dock experienced a dock fire a couple of years ago, and they had to replace one of their main piers. The dock was worth considerably more than was recognized on the improvement assessment because replacement is not considered improvement. And so, the dock was replaced for millions of dollars more than they received in their maybe just under $5 million improvement base. They were looking at a really hefty tax bill when that improvement went through because ports basically are taxed on their lands, more of their improvements and how they operate, and as those depreciate, in general, their assessment bases go down. So, when they add a new assessment, all of a sudden, their tax really jumped up. And they came in and they lobbied council because they were seeing a really scary tax rate that year, or tax change that year for them. I think they quoted 65% by the time they considered all area taxes. They came to the council and asked council for a reprieve, and council did end up taking them from the 27.5 rate down to 25. 25 was what they landed on. Since then, we have been phasing that rate back up on a slow basis. And today, we want to talk to you about where we'd like to go this year. They are currently, as of 2018, sitting at a tax rate of 26. We have a couple of different options. We could leave them where they are. That would basically, if all other things stayed the same with how we assess taxes right now, that impact, or the residential would be sitting at about 2.33 percent in terms of change, business at about 11.02 percent, and the port would be sitting at about 0.64 percent change, or about $3,845. If we move it up a little bit, which will be my recommendation to you, is that we start to phase it back up, 26.5, for instance, the residence isn't impacted very much, it's about 2.3 from that 2.33 percent we saw before. Business moves from 11.02 down to 10.99, so very limited motion. But the port moves up to 2.24 percent, so closer to what the residential is experiencing, and about a $13,419 bill. There are arguments we could maybe go straight back up to the 27.5. As staff, we're not recommending you do that right now. The key reason being that because of that depreciation factor, right now, we're still able to have the taxes slowly move up when we have a little bit of room with the tax rates to move up with them. We're able to still collect at least the tax we did last year plus a little bit more. If we went right to 27.5, we'd collect a lot more right now, but as they started to depreciate, you'd start to see the tax revenue drop off each year. So, I think we did update this council that we are in the middle of some discussions with the province. We met with all other port providers in British Columbia and have lobbied them to relook at the legislation and see if they can maybe change that legislation to not have such dramatic impacts on all the ports. And so, we'd like to keep slowly phasing up and giving them a little bit of time, hopefully, to address that legislation before we hit the point where we start to depreciate and head down. So, our recommendation from staff will be that you move from 26 to 27.5 tax rate. So, get to move into the bit more of what we're here for today, which is the workshopping. I'm probably just stop there and look to the chairs if there's any questions around tax in general before we move on or anything that we explained that maybe wasn't particularly clear.
Yeah, just questions or clarification.
Yeah, I had a quick question about the port rate and how the depreciation, if it went to the max, would be going down to, would be impacted by the depreciation? So, with the rate we're at now, and we're able to lift the rate as we go, how's depreciation working with that? Does the depreciation, does it go away? So, it'll quite get?
Yeah. So, if they make no new changes or improvements to the dock, in theory, all of that base, the majority of what they're assessed on is their improvement and their ability to do port operations. So, generally, improvements depreciate. Land doesn't necessarily, land has a moderate slide. So, generally, with most ports, what they experience is that that improvement base narrows down quite dramatically while the land is preset by government and really doesn't follow market. So, what happens is their assessment base ends up being some quasi-middle ground that keeps going downward unless they make improvements. So, if we're capped at a tax rate and that assessment base is going down, the revenue will follow it down. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So, how are we able to rate, given that, which I understand, how are we able to be increasing the rate of this? It's the values being depreciated, but we're able to put the rate?
We're putting the rate up a little bit.
To sort of level that out?
So, what, because when we were at the cap, we had no wiggle room. We had to leave the rate where it was, right? So, now, we are absolutely at the mercy of that assessment drop, whereas right now, we still have a little bit of leeway to play with the rates to still have the port contributing to any increases. Is that?
Good. That answers my question.
And I've been asked to define improvement better, but essentially, with B.C. Assessment, land value, because land is subject to market values, improvements are the structures, the houses, whatever, things that are put on the land that improve it. Is that?
I have a question myself. The 27.5, that's a low rate, not a ratio. What is the ratio?
I do know.
Just over 8.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it was 8.55 on the first scenario. So, when we get there, you'll see that. Okay. So, as we move into this, we'll just remind you that when we did our financial plan bylaw, we had an overall change in revenue or increase in revenue of about 6.35 percent. At the time, we did an estimate for you and assumed that probably 653,000 of that could be attributed to non-market change, and that's about 2.36 percent of that. So, we were expecting that the existing rate base would probably need to come to the table for about 3.99, almost 4 percent. So, just to provide context of that revenue piece and what hopefully everybody understood as we did the financial plan bylaws. So, now, we're going to try and take the $29 million that we need, and we're going to try and slot that in through tax rates to, tax rates against assessment base to come up with that $29.4 million that we need. And just a reminder that that 3.99 percent or 4 percent roughly is going to hit, those property classes is different, it's going to hit properties different. So, you'll start to see the fun of tax rate setting shortly. So, if everything were to stay the same as last year, meaning that we kept the port at a rate of 26, we kept the ratios for business at 2.73, we kept light industry at 3.82, and then the other ratios we set as a factor to each other, we would, those ratios and rates would line up and compare to last year's B.C. averages based on this table. So, for the business rate, for instance, or ratio, for instance, the B.C. average in 2018 was 2.75 ratio to residential, and we are sitting at 2.73, so just below the British Columbia average. Again, I'm not a huge fan of comparing rates, but people like to because they sometimes know what their assessment value is from one jurisdiction to another. And so, we do show you the B.C. averages there. The B.C. average for business is 11.3, and if we stayed everything the same, we'd be at about 8. So, again, below the average. Because we have two different port rates, we have a weighted average ratio for the port of about 8.55, so that's ratio, and then we already talked too heavily about the rates. We also thought we'd do a quick and dirty comparison of what some of our corridor partners are doing or did do in 2018 as a comparison to us. So, Whistler's business ratio was 2.74, Pemberton 2.25, West Van 2.74, and the B.C. average 2.75. So, we were right pretty well in the hood of most of the averages and our corridor partners with the exception of Pemberton. And from a light industry perspective, you can see the ranges there, Whistler at 6.6, West Van at 14.88, Pemberton at 3.4, we were at 3.82, and the B.C. average is 4.7. So, just to give you some context. And without further ado, I think maybe you're better to speak to some of this because Roland got the pleasure of doing all the various ratios that we're going to present to you today, and speaking to you about how these are, or do you want me to carry through this first one and then pick up the ratios from there?
Okay. I've, I don't remember which one this is. Okay. So, what we're presenting, the first set of slides here, what we're showing is ratio as scenario number one. We did not change any of the ratios from 2018. Assumed, we made no assumptions, in fairness, rather than to say we assumed this or that. We made no assumptions. We simply said that this is the existing ratio, we will keep the ratio the same, and we will adjust the tax, the residential mill rate such that we are able to generate the $29.4 million. As a result, we have this set of numbers. What you can see here is that average residential property is showing an assessment increase of just under 10 percent. 6 point, I'm looking at the second gray line down from the top. Assessment change for single-family at roughly 6 percent. Assessment change for average strata at 16, and assessment change for business at just over 19. So, what this is going to result in is because we needed about a 6 percent increase in revenue, we're looking at a residential decrease of around 10 percent, average residential assessment. It means that on an overall basis, we're going to see a situation where the tax increase is going to be, for residential, is going to be lower than the 4 percent that we showed you earlier, all things being equal with the same ratios that we had used previously. So, now, dropping down to the bottom section, you'll see that average residential, we're coming in at 2.3 percent. We're showing, and that can be differentiated where average single-family is showing a slight reduction in their tax percent, percentage change would go down slightly. You see a change of roughly $30 a year. Strata would go up by approximately 8 percent, and average business would go up by approximately 11 percent. And again, we have to remind you that these numbers are averages, okay? So, when we move on to the next slide, we'll look at single residential, and you'll note that there's a fairly wide variance there. Now, I should point out that the first column, unfortunately, the 2018 assessment at 8.22, that number is incorrect. It wasn't, it was missed in our update. It should actually be 8.77, which is on the first slide. So, those percentages in the very first column are not correct. You should refer to the previous slide. That being said, single-family, we're seeing a fairly significant assessment increase in Brackendale and in Paradise Valley. So, that's driving a fairly large percentage increase in Brackendale and, again, in Paradise Valley. And on an overall basis, we're looking at 2.3 percent on average, not the 1.1, my apologies. You're looking at 2.3 percent on average for single-family residential, and that's varying from a reduction in Garibaldi Heights to a 9 percent increase in Brackendale. Now, that's what we're talking about when we're saying the average single fam, sorry, the average residential, or even the average single-family, is an average. It is not necessarily indicative of what's going to happen to your house or your neighbor's house because you may live in one neighborhood and your friends may live in a different neighborhood which has, you know, different parameters impacting it from an assessment perspective. So, that's important to keep in mind as we work through the numbers. Probably even more dramatically, in fairness, is the comparison of strata. The average change in strata is 8 percent, but we're looking at changes in assessment in the downtown area of almost 30 percent change in assessment, which is resulting in a 20 percent increase in tax. And in a little further north, in the Tantalus area, the increase in assessment is 8 percent. And so, the tax there is barely moving at all. As you can see, it's less than $20 on an average basis year over year. So, we're targeting the average value, trying to sort of keep the focus there if possible because it's pretty hard to speak to both of these items. because it's pretty hard to speak to both of these items, you know, trying to use one number, okay? So we're going to go with the averages. And then lastly, we're looking at businesses and, sorry.
Just clarifying, question, Erica?
No, I'm getting a bit antsy about time. So I recognize that this is the first time through tax ratios for council, but we have a special business meeting. We have to open by 12:25, and we have a hard start at 1 o'clock for the next workshop because we have a visitor coming. So we need to accelerate the presentation and get to questions so that we can have this conversation.
Okay. So we will accelerate. The last slide, using representative information that we're presenting, is on business. And it's, again, as you can see, overall business average assessment has gone up significantly, almost 20 percent. And we've picked two different businesses, one here downtown and one in Garibaldi, in Tantalus. Significant difference in assessment, and as a result of that, the businesses downtown are going to see a higher increase in their tax impact, so a higher percent. If we look at this from the perspective of what impact do, does changing these various ratios have on an overall basis? You'll see the first set of numbers, that's what was just depicted. The second set is the change in the port, very limited impact on business or residential. The third column is a reduction in the business ratio by .5, has a fairly significant impact on increase in residential and obviously decrease in, in business. And if you look at the third one, a reduction in light industry by the same .5, doesn't have a significant impact on either residential or business. So really what we're talking about when we're dealing with the ratios here is what is the ratio for business? Residential, business, those are the two ratios that we need to focus on. In the scenarios that we are presenting, the port rate is set at 26.5, the light industry rate is held at 3.75. We have changed the business scenarios, and these are the three scenarios we are going to present. One has bringing the business, changing the business ratio so that businesses are under 10 percent. Second scenario, or third scenario, I should say, has both the residential and business showing the same percentage increase, so at 4.5 percent, they, that's the same number for both of them. And the last scenario would bring the residential rate increase under 3 percent. So we wanted to look at those. We could give you an idea of what the numbers are on a percentage and dollar amount basis.
So just to clarify here, one of the reasons we've honed in on this and probably one of the thought processes council wants to keep is there's the economic development piece of our businesses competing against our strata, affordable housing units, as you determine what you want your ratios to be basically. And it's lots of scenarios, but these are just a handful to give you an order of magnitude and idea of how those interrelate.
So in this scenario, we're looking at an increase in average residential of 3.5 percent, and that would result in an increase in the average business of approximately 8 The next scenario that we're presenting would just show, if we were to hold the, if we were to increase the percent for business and residential by the same amount, that would come up to 4.5 percent, that would be the number that would balance that. It would result in a four and a half percent increase for average residential, same for businesses. That would bring businesses year over year change to roughly $300. And could you?
So where's the ratio in this?
Where is the ratio?
Right, so we change it by percentage, but our philosophy is to do it by ratio. So where, how do we know what this has done to our ratios?
I, you know, because I have notes here to tell me what the ratio is. Actually, we took the ratio off the slide, so now I'm trying to do this by memory, but that's okay. I do know what the numbers are. In this instance, the ratio is 2 point...
Which one are you doing?
Sorry.
Two?
Here, in class two, sorry, in number two, average of 3.5, the ratio is 2.3 percent? Sorry, 2.63.
For business?
For business, 2.63. Yeah, yeah, for sure.
And light industrial?
Light industrial is held at 3.75.
Which is a little bit lower than last year, so...
Which is slightly lower than last year, and we just set that rate and left it there.
But bear in mind that industrial doesn't impact a lot, so if we put it to 3.82 or 3.75, there'd be very little change in these percentages.
Are we ready for questions on, clarify, or, do you clarify?
Well, it's on the ratios, actually. The heavy industry rate, which is, I believe, the only one potentially is wood fiber, but we changed that, we changed it back in 2010, and we dropped it down to a port of 27.5, just because that was the only other heavy industry we had, and that, for competitive reasons, but there actually was nobody being taxed as a heavy industry at that time. And I think it was about two years ago, we raised it to whatever it is now, I guess.
The B.C. average.
To the B.C. average.
Rate.
The ratio of the B.C. average.
Actually, it was the rate to rate, yeah. Which is, yeah, one of the questions we'll ask you today, but...
Oh, okay, that's how we got there then. Because now, in ratio terms, we're way above the B.C. average.
Yes, and so, but we can revisit that, it hasn't been assessed to anybody, it's, so we can talk about that, it's one of our wrap-up questions to you, is what you'd like to do with that. Okay. And, sorry, I could pull up the model to actually find out what your ratios are, if you remember.
In this instance, the number for number three, this is going to be 2.53 as the ratio for business to residential.
Oops, sorry.
And in this last slide, the ratio is 2.67.
And so light industrial is always at 3.75.
And the light industrials have been held at 3.75 through all of those scenarios.
And but we can, again, revisit if you just want to stay at the 3.82 that you were before, you're already below the B.C. average.
We just thought that if we were going to bring down the business rate, we would also bring down the light industrial rate also, just...
So essentially, what we need to follow up with council on is a couple of key ones. I'll start with the port tax rate, looking to the chair, but was there any specific direction, are you comfortable moving to 26.5? Would you like to stay at 26? Do you want to move differently?
Counselor?
Yeah, recalling the discussion we had when we dropped it down, it was, if I recall correctly, it was only for a few years, we were going to phase it back up, and I think it's really, for me, it was just a question of how quickly to come back. And so .5, going from 26 to 26.5, to me, is a reasonable step, and that puts us back up, that trend puts us back up to where the, where the rate was within a couple of years. And so I think, to me, that's realistic, and that's reasonable.
Another one that's hopefully easier to knock off, light industry. Did you want to leave it at 3.82, which it was last year, or move it slightly to be more in line with where, what we were, to be honest, when, I believe, the scenario started to run, I think Mr. Russell was actually trying to leave it about a one spread from business. So if we were moving it to 2.75, the, the industry rate would be 3.75. But to be honest, as you run a million scenarios, you start to realize it's not making a big difference, so you just hold it. But really, 3.82 or 3.75, they're both under the industry average, or the average of British Columbia right now. Do you want to move it, or would you like to keep it stable at 3.82, which is what we've had it at for the last two years?
Counselor, sorry, the B.C. average is 3.82?
I'll just quickly pop back to the B.C. averages so we can see, here's your B.C. averages. So light industry is 4.55. And again, if you wanted to see how your counterparts are doing on the next page, you'll see that we're pretty in line, Pemberton's the only one that's beating us up there.
I'm inclined to leave it where it is.
Okay?
And I'd make the same comment, I mean, certainly below the B.C. average, but the idea of lowering light industry, the problem is, is the commercial, the business one. And so if we lower light industry, it just puts more pressure on that. If we leave light industry where it is, then it gives us a little bit more flexibility with the commercial, so I'd be inclined to leave light industry where it is.
So through the chair, the only feedback I'll give you is if you start to get too big a spread, then you start to get properties jockeying back and forth lobbying assessment to be one or the other, but that's really the only outcome from that.
Counselor, question?
And just for myself, and I, I guess I'm struggling a little bit with just clarity on how well does this align with our economic development strategy, affordable housing plans? It's not clear to me actually that pushing up the tax rate on residential will necessarily decrease affordability. I think it may actually have the opposite effect, depending on what services you provide for that, and so I guess first, I'm looking for a little bit better understanding of how these things relate, but I must recognize that the time...
And to be frank, I'd be outside my element there, I would need to talk a little bit more, maybe Ms. Lende could speak to that more?
Yeah, I have to admit, I'm not entirely following the chair, but in terms of staff and where our minds are, the balance between taxing business, especially when it affects small business, like on Cleveland Avenue versus Big Box, it could be detrimental economically to those particular businesses. And then when you look at the strata properties, which, you know, anecdotally tend to be what we consider our more affordable rental or ownership properties than, say, single-family, when those tax rates go up, whether it's a rental or an ownership, their annual tax bills that they pay go up, which would impact the income of the people living there. So that, it impacts how much they pay in housing. So that's really the simple comparison between the two when you're trying to, as a council, determine the rates for, to those classes. That's where we are coming from, from staff, just as part of that discussion, pretty I'm not sure if that helps with...
Yeah, I think there's some other questions I hadn't, beyond, I didn't cause enough things, but, but Vera, what are options at this point, just given the time?
I have to, I just have to open the special meeting and then recess it.
So should I look at, am I going to recess this one?
Just recess for a minute.
Okay, so I will maybe do that now, recess this meeting?
All right, so I'd like to open the special business meeting for the District of Squamish on Tuesday, April 9th, Hoppins, Wallon, Crease, Delittmore, Clasco, Homish, O'Wayneville. Move to adopt the open agenda, moved by Counselor Stoner, seconded by Counselor French, all those in favor, so those motion carries. And then I will recess that meeting.
To resume following?
To resume following this conversation, which hopefully is going to draw to a close. You're on.
Yeah, I guess, and it maybe is something that we just dig deeper until, for next year, given where we are this year, but again, in my mind, if you increase residential taxes, does that put downward pressure on pricing and deal with affordability so, you know, at the end of the day, the amount of money out of my pocket is the same or less, even though residential taxes have gone up? I mean, you can take some money out of business and, you know, boost the economic development piece, and that's where I'm just not sure what the evidence says about that kind of thing or what our expectations are.
Through the chair, I don't have any of that information at this time, and it would require much more research than we provide for council.
Our assessed values in the district continue to go up, and they're going up differently depending on the year, depending on the neighborhood. So that has a bigger impact on housing affordability than, tax rate certainly is one component of it, but having your home go up 20 percent in a year has more to do with what you're going to sell or buy that home for. And then you have to weigh what the, the average of the tax has been on that property, but whether you can then afford it. So you have to be able to afford a mortgage, and then you look at what the district's done with the taxes and decide whether you can afford the taxes in that home. So it is part of the affordability equation, certainly. And I think this is, you only have to go through this conversation once before you realize why councils are now lobbying the province to change the Assessment Act to try and preserve our high streets, so that you don't have these huge assessment increases on highest and best use that doesn't exist yet, because it doesn't help local businesses. But they're in the same class as Big Box, multinational stores. So how do you preserve local business while also, you know, giving a nice treat to the Walmarts, one of the largest shopping malls of the world? And then we recognize that someone in Garibaldi Highlands might be really happy with their tax bill this year, and the folks in Brackendale all probably should have called the assessment office and said, hey, we live in a debris flow hazard, so your assessment's too high. I mean, it, it changes, and I know when it hit my neighborhood, it was a huge hit one year, but in Valley Cliff, they didn't experience it, and then the next year was their turn. So it's gone in waves through our community, but our decision here today will have a far greater impact on the businesses, because we don't have enough light industrial and heavy industry to diversify that tax base, which is why that's a pillar of our strategic plan. The more we can diversify our tax base, the easier this conversation gets, because we're not putting it all on our residential tax base or our small businesses. I don't know if that helps to provide a little extra context, but that is how I'm thinking about this.
Anyone else?
So through the chair, I, I believe I heard port at 26.5, light industry at 3.82. Major industry, would you like us to carry on with the B.C. average, or would you like us to align it with our ratio to set that rate? Here's the applicable, so if we went with major industry, our rate would be, and wanted to do it by rate, it would be 32.49 in a ratio over market, or we can set it so that it follows the port, the same one that you're seeing with the port there at an 8.27. Do you have an opinion on that?
Yeah, personally, I'd like to see it go to the ratio, and, I mean, at the moment, the only one potentially is wood fiber, but going back to my first term when we messed with the rates, messed with the fixed standards, we...
Language is so important.
We did that to try to be competitive, and we lowered these different things, so that we were an attractive environment for incoming investment. And I think wood fiber is going to go on a path of its own, if it goes ahead, it will most likely be with some kind of a tax bill, and so all of this discussion is sort of subject to whatever comes out of that. But there might be another one out there, that might look at Squamish, and so I think we want to be sort of competitive in that sense. And so I think I would just go to the B.C. average ratio.
Just there.
Just leave it there, and at the moment, it doesn't, in dollar terms, make any difference. Wood fiber is, as I say, is most likely going to end up in its own path, but I think it would make a difference to the next potential investor, or could.
Through the chair, just to be clear, there will be no actual major industry joining us until the next assessment base, because that's the way B.C. assessment operates, so, but it... So, but it, really, you're setting it now to send a bit of a signal as to what you might be prepared to do in a future year. So, just to put some context around that for you. And again, we're really looking to stabilize our philosophy around ratios in relation to residential for us. So, by all means, everything else started at the B.C. average, so that makes sense in terms of ratios, but just context on that. So, I'm hearing, go to the ratio.
Anyone else have comments on that? I hope, Mayor Elliott?
Go ahead, I was going to talk about something else.
Okay, yeah, my only feeling is, because there isn't anyone that says impacting, I'm not inclined, especially when I think about our strategic plan and so on, to lower the major industrial rate. It's not going to impact housing or business at this point. We don't know what's going to happen with wood fiber. I don't know that going into negotiations, it sends in a perfect signal and so on. So, I would be inclined just to leave the status quo in terms of our major industrial rate myself.
Mayor Elliott?
Well, I think you need other councils to weigh in, because we've got one voice and one voice, and they're speaking in opposite directions. And so, I think it's important for council to weigh in on this conversation. I do think that in our strategic plan, we have attracting businesses in our key target segments. So, if we're thinking about the sectors that Ms. Mulligan presented, do those require a heavy industry rate, or are they going to be more classified under light industry? Those are the sectors we're trying to attract. Given that, we are also trying to be more strategic about the B.C.R. North Yards plans, and that comes into play as well. So, I think we can't make this decision with one industrial player in mind. I think we have to think broadly across, you know, all the sectors that we're trying to attract here. So, I'm comfortable with the B.C. average and sort of go from there. That can change next year.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you. I don't mind being above, being above the average, but I do think that we're too far above the average there to be, to sort of strike that balance between, to your point, council, trying to go with sending the signal that, you know, maybe we want to be moving towards our target in industries which fall in one light industry category. So, keeping that rate slightly above the B.C. average, maybe, my mind goes to somewhere between those two numbers to say that we're slightly above that, but we're not, we haven't just, we haven't gone the 20%. The difference there is too great, so I'd be happy somewhere in between. I think that does both the things that we're trying to do here, which will allow us to encourage that light industry and let's still be open to the investment in the major industry. So, somewhere, I guess, throw a number up there, and be in the neighborhood of, you know, just under 9.5, 9.4, something like that. Is that the difference?
To counsel, her first point, why don't we bring it in line with the port?
Counselor Anderson?
I'd like to support going to the B.C. average. In reference, with reference to our economic strategy that we presented to us a couple of weeks ago, there are a couple of what are being referred to as sectors that do involve potential major investors. And in my recollection, experience over the last five years or so, there's been a couple of people knocking on Squamish's door that have also considered Sunshine Coast and Vancouver Island, because of water transport. And so, I'm inclined to go to recommend the B.C. average for that category. And with respect to light industrial, our key competing region is Fraser Valley, I'd just throw that out. But we do, in fact, have some prospective investors, and this is, for example, in the area of energy conversion. And these companies are looking in South Coast more generally.
So, have Counselor Race and Counselor Anderson? No, I've spoken.
I'm curious about the, where the difference is in your, Ms. Smith was just talking about companies maybe advocating to be classified one way or the other, and where's the threshold from the light to major in this context of...
Yeah, we see less of that movement generally. Major industry is pretty well-defined, and they have some very different valuation methods than light industry. So, it's, we don't see as much swing, but again, this actually won't come into play this year, so it's really a philosophical discussion. And if I'm hearing the table correctly, I think when you talk to wanting the B.C. average, you're talking about the ratio, correct? Okay, so, if we take it away and give you something sort of close to that 8.27, is that the consensus, am I clear?
Maybe just go to a couple more comments, I think on this topic, maybe, or, Mayor Elliott?
In the spirit of moving on, because the difficult conversation we need to have is about business and residential, not this one, I would like to go with Counselor Stoner's suggestion, that we take it to 8.78, which is the port, and leave it there. That would be my recommendation, to try and meet some of what Counselor Herbert's saying, and Counselor Race, Counselor Anderson.
Counselor French?
Yes, for that.
Thank you. Now, the tough one, the business one. What we'll do is we'll just quickly fly back to those screens, and we'll tell you exactly what the ratio is, because we did flop to the model quickly and grab those, just to make sure we're giving you the right answer. Okay, so, you had the original one, which was just business as usual, which was, sorry, I didn't bring that one up, now I'll bring that one up. So, business as usual, you're seeing really an average residential of about 2.3, average business about 11, and your strata is about 8, okay? And that rate is 2.73. You're looking at number two, where your business, sorry, your multiplier is 2.63. You're seeing a 3.5%, so you're keeping your average res under four. We're able to keep our average business at 7.9, and that Cleveland, I believe, we think, that representative Cleveland property stays under 10 then. Okay, so that's number two. Number three is 2.52. That swings it more residential, so that it's an even hit, 4.5 and 4.5. Your average strata, though, is now taking an over 10% hit. And number four is a 2.67, correct? 2.67?
Yeah.
Number four? And we're seeing under three for average res, we're keeping it under nine for average strata, and the business tops out at about, on average, is about 9.2, but your Cleveland property, your representative property will bump over, okay? My gut is, you might want to look at two and four more, but... I think that was, or the...
What was the average strata on two?
9.2.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Race and then Mayor Elliott?
I like number one.
The thing's stable from prior year? Fortunately, one's not close, so we got to flip around this.
I wanted to, since I'll just explain my thinking, I think it does hit business a little bit this year. All of the numbers, when we look at and break them down, aren't really huge. But the strata is going to also take a hit when we start to do things like that, to change the business rate. And it does come in waves, as Mayor was stating, and so, one day, it's the business. I sat on council where business has actually gone down, and it's just more just because of the assessment. When you start trying to meddle with it too much, year after year, with the assessment values, it sometimes just leads us astray, so I would just leave it.
Mayor Elliott?
I actually find number one unsupportable because of the impact on business. I'm quite concerned about our small independent businesses, so I'd be more inclined to look at number two or number three. So, number two, I think, I think shares it most economically across the classes and signals to business that we are still trying to be below the provincial average is higher than 2.63, is it not?
Yes, it is. We're under the B.C. average with all of our scenarios.
Yeah. So, I'd probably go to number two first, and then, number three second.
Number three is your second choice? Or was it number four?
No, number three.
I'd go to number four.
And sorry, you wanted to see number four?
Counselor?
My preference is this one, number four. I like the even distribution across all the classes.
Counselor, sorry?
My preference is number two, I think it does a little bit better job in terms of even distribution and, but still signals to our business, maybe, that we're trying to, trying to support them where we can.
So, I think we have one, two, four, three, two, four.
And everything else is someone else, and I don't think you and Mr., or Counselor Herbert and Anderson have swayed in it.
Yeah, I think, I think this option here, number two, seems to strike the best balance. I'm conscious of the point that Counselor Race makes, where there's going to be changes in different categories throughout the years, and it gets a bit, gets messy if you create too far from it, but I think this is a balanced approach, and it'll sort of spread it, spread it out a little bit, knowing that we're lobbying for changing the B.C. assessments values, and we need to go back and, if we're successful there, and that changes, then we will be able to adjust that as the, if those, that assessment changes. But given what we have, I think number two here is the way.
I'm happy to support number two.
Sounds like we're, well, I see on number two.
You haven't spoken.
Yeah, I, I'm sort of happy to go with the group. I do have some concern with it. Generally, want to spend a bit more time with the numbers, but I guess, hearing that, you know, different communities have felt the impact differently, I'm not sure that some of the bumps we see in strata, like if we try and alleviate that this time, are we then meaning, having the impact of Brackendale then avoids the same sort of increase that you or your other community has helped contribute to? And so, by maintaining status quo, even though it's a harder hit for Brackendale, which then sort of skews me to the strata number, is that actually fair when you look at over a four-year period, and that everyone in the community has sort of stepped up and done a little extra piece in that? That's just not clear to me in the numbers, I'm given the time and so on, and I am happy to move forward. It sounds like there's general consensus around number two, so...
Counselor, Mayor Elliott?
So, just checking with staff, is there another opportunity to have this conversation, with not getting offside with our need to hit the May deadline?
So, thank you through the chair. We could potentially set up a special somewhere. We are getting a little bit tight in terms of hitting your regular meetings. If you're willing to do a special on a Cal day, then we could revisit. Or, I'm not sure what happens after your meeting today, we're happy to come back today and sit with you to just finish off. I think we're really close, so... And you will get another chance to kick at this, I guess, when the bylaw comes, but ideally, we would like the bylaw to run through fairly smoothly when it comes, because we are going to be pushing the deadline.
Well, I think we've got five people able to support on number two right now, so...
I just want to make sure that everyone's had the options on the table.
I'll support two, I'm not married to four.
We can also bring back two options at the bylaw time, and you can look at those two if that helps, but sometimes it doesn't, sometimes it just happens.
I think what I'm hearing is people are comfortable with number two, so...
As your CFO, I do think number two is a nice middle ground. You're still giving a break to business, but still not disjourning number one too badly.
So, do you need a motion, is there a resolution you need, counsel?
I don't think I need one, I have notes, but I'm looking to my corporate officer, otherwise, we're good. It usually just confuses things, because of course, nothing's decided until the bylaw goes through, so... Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
So, can we just, can we just go through the ratios, please?
Sure.
So, port, light, and heavy, by business.
So, we're looking at the ratio for the port being probably around eight, sorry, I took that one out of the slide deck, but I think it's a little higher than the 8.55 you saw on the standard one, because it's going up now.
8.78?
Yeah, and so, to that question, given we're lifting port a little bit, I believe I heard that you wanted major at the port ratio, so whatever that lifts will also be your major?
Yep.
Fair enough. Your light industry, we're going at 3.82, and your business ratio for number two, just...
2.63.
2.63, so a nice, a bit of a reduction for them. I think you've settled on a really solid platform, counsel, thank you.
So, I guess, I'm going to change the mood to turning. Mayor Elliott, Counselor Race, all those are different, we're closed, and then, finished.